All right. I think we got everybody here that's going to be here tonight. Commissioner Douglas will not be attending, so it's going to be the six of us here. And appreciate your patience. We had a closed session before this and we had a 4 o'clock budget meeting, so we had to get some food in us so we could be productive tonight. So I'm going to call to order the May 23rd, 2022 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Dubbuck, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please.
As we gather this evening to conduct the business of our city, let us as always strive to be the best possible versions of ourselves. May we express our differences respectfully and be ever mindful of the fact that we are all here on both sides of this table for the same reason. We love our community, we've made our homes here, we've raised or are raising families here. We play in the parks, we walk our sidewalks, we love our neighborhoods and the quality of life we've all built here together. And we're all deeply personally committed to fostering a strong, healthy city for current and future generations of Royal Oakers. In the wake of recent tragedies, including devastating tornadoes here in our own state up in northern Michigan, hate motivated shootings in Buffalo, and the ongoing bloody conflict in Ukraine, let's keep those who are most impacted and those who are suffering in our thoughts and in our hearts. And even as we disagree, let's maintain perspective about what truly matters. Remember what bonds us and recognize our shared values and how privileged we are to be discussing here as a community tonight, the issues that we will consider. May we be successful in all these endeavors this evening. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Commissioner Dubbuck. All right, this brings us to item four tonight, which is the approval of the agenda. Before I ask a motion for the approval of the agenda, Mr. Brake, I know there's been a request to, for item nine, to push off to another time. Is that correct?
Postpone that to June 13th.
To June 13th?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, this is the road millage ballot language. Some language issues still have to be worked out, I guess.
Yes.
Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move approval of the agenda with the removal of item nine.
Or the postponement of item nine to June 13th?
That's exactly what I said.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Collo, we have a second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion on the approval of the agenda. All right, without a call for the vote, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have an agenda. All right, we've got a couple of proclamations here tonight. We're going to first do the designating June 4th, 2022, as Wear Orange Day to bring awareness to gun violence. And then we're going to do designating June as Pride Month and June 8th, 2022, as Family Pride. So two pretty cool proclamations we're going to do here tonight. If you guys give me 10 seconds here to get my proclamations in order, just to make sure. And...
You know, I think proclamations need to start with "hear ye, hear ye," if you know what I mean.
I'll go to the Renaissance Festival and practice and see if I can get good at it. Okay, so Lindsey Warren, are you... There she is. All right, come on up, Lindsey Warren. Meet me here in front.
So for those of you who don't know, Lindsey Warren, she's an amazing resident that has dedicated a lot of her free time to advocating for the end of gun violence. She's part of Moms Demand Action and does so much in our community and really has been instrumental in helping bring awareness to Royal Oak, but also, you know, helping us here and advise our team here upon things that we can do to help, you know, sadly, you know, curb what is an epidemic in this country and doesn't seem to be going well. So I think...
Let's see if this mic works. I'm supposed to be... I'm learning my... This is Warren, I'm learning my new lessons here. The camera is always...
Just a second.
Okay, I have to give it a... There it is.
There you go.
Okay. All right. This is a proclamation designating June 3rd, 2022, Wear Orange for National Gun Violence Awareness Day and June 22nd, June 2022, as National Gun Violence Awareness Month. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Royal Oak, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas the Centers for Disease Control reports in statistics from 2020, over 19,000 homicides by firearms, more than 3,000 over the average per year previously reported. Whereas 45,222 total gun deaths in 2020 were by far the most on record, representing a 14% increase from the year before, a 25% increase from five years earlier, and a 43% increase from a decade prior. And whereas Michigan in 2020 had 1,454 gun violence homicide fatalities with a rate of 14.6 deaths per 100,000 people, Michigan has the 24th highest rate of gun deaths in the United States, moving up from 29th since last reporting cycle. And whereas on November 30th, 2021, our neighborhood to the north, a vibrant, family-friendly, and welcoming community, Oxford, Michigan, saw a day of terror as gun violence erupted at Oxford High School, striking at the very heart of the community, claiming the lives of four precious children. And Royal Oak residents knew, all of the numbers and statistics matter not, but the four precious lives matter and demand we do better for all children. And whereas cities across the nation, including Royal Oak, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support of the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide, and domestic violence hotlines, and increased city gun violence. And whereas in January 2013, Hadea Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 3rd, 2022, to recognize the 25th birthday of Hadea Pendleton, born June 2nd, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadea Pendleton, in tribute to Madison Baldwin, Tate Meyer, Justin Schilling, and Handa St. Juliana, who should be celebrating prom and graduations like other high school students in Michigan this month. In tribute to all victims of gun violence and in tribute to the loved ones of these victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadea's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 3rd, this Friday, in June, this Friday in June, in 2022, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 3rd, 2022, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our children safe. Now therefore be it resolved, I'm Mayor Mike Fournier and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby declare the first Friday in June, June 3rd, 2022, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor the value of human lives. Ms. Warren, it is an honor and a privilege to present this proclamation to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for doing this again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And if you'd like a few words...
I do it to teach for Tommy. I love me. I left my little activist at home. I just wanted to take one moment to thank you guys. I'm going to take this down just so you can hear me. You have supported this cause for, what, four years now, I believe? And we can't thank you enough. As we just saw in November, no zip code is immune, so we thank you for the continued support. If anyone wants to join in the fight, you can check out MomsDemandAction.org or download the app. We have a South Oakland chapter that you can get involved in. Thank you all. Appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Tough topic, tough work, but it takes all of us. All right. For our second proclamation tonight, I'll ask Carl Wiley, Megan Summers, and Becca Russell to come on up. Carl Wiley is from 515, and Megan Summers and Becca Russell are from our very Royal Oak library. So I have a proclamation to read to them. You guys want to keep the distance? It's all... Everything's awkward that I do, so we just keep with the awkwardness. All right? Well, I'll tell you about... Most kids have an awkward year. I had an awkward decade when I was younger, so we can talk about that later. All right. So, you know, thank you for being here today. This has been something that, you know, we've been, that we kind of started a few years ago. Obviously, we had some interruptions with COVID, something this community is very proud of. And we are excited that this year, you know, hopefully COVID relenting, that we can get back out there and have our Pride event, hang the flag up in front of City Hall, and, you know, really celebrate our LGBTQ brothers and sisters in a way that is worth, you know, every right so. So it's my honor to read this proclamation to you. I'm so grateful that you guys will be accepting this proclamation on behalf of the city. So here it goes. This is a proclamation designating June 2022 as Pride Month and June 8th as Family Pride in Royal Oak. Whereas the city of Royal Oak supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And in November 2013, voters in Royal Oak made a commitment by approving the Human Rights Ordinance, making the rights the laws of the city. And whereas all people, regardless of age, gender identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges, have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas the city of Royal Oak accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population, with each individual being treated equally and included equally, leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, transsexual, queer questioning, intersex, asexual, ally, pansexual communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic success of the city of Royal Oak. And whereas, as a society at large, we are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas to acknowledge the efforts to bring awareness to the continuing evolution of the Pride movement, the city of Royal Oak will display the rainbow flag representing light, healing, sun, calmness, art, and spirit in front of City Hall for the month of June. And whereas to celebrate all families and family members, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, transsexual, queer questioning, intersex, asexual, ally, pansexual, or straight, as part of Pride Month, Royal Oak was honored to host the inaugural Family Pride event on June 12th, 2019. And whereas the 2020 and 2021 Family Pride events had to be postponed because of COVID-19 pandemic, we invite everyone to mark your calendars to celebrate the second Royal Oak Family Pride on June 8th, 2022, bringing every and all families together in the spirit of community Royal Oak embraces and make us Royal Oak proud. Now therefore be it resolved, I'm Mayor Fournier and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby proclaim June 2022 as Pride Month in Royal Oak, and encourage our residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality and inclusion members of the LGBTQ plus community face, and celebrate the contributions that enhance our city. And we invite everyone to celebrate the spirit with us at Family Pride on June 8th, 2022. Do you guys have anything you want to say?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just really want to thank the city of Royal Oak for recognizing how important it is to, I guess, designate this proclamation. And really, I just want to encourage you all to come to Family Pride. We've been working really hard on it. I'd like to thank Carol Schwanger and Kristy Siegel, who we've been working very closely with on this. Like the mayor said, it's on June 8th, Wednesday, from 4:00 to 9:00 at the farmer's market. We're going to have all kinds of interactive booths and vendors, we'll have food trucks, live music. And the thing that we're, or I personally, am most excited about is we'll be doing Drag Queen Storytimes. And I am really excited that one of our performers, Carl, is here. And again, I just personally want to thank you guys so much for recognizing the queer community here. It really means a lot.
I just want to thank Megan and Becca for including me on Family Pride Day. I'm super excited about Drag Queen Storytime. If I had more time, I probably would have came in drag so you could meet my alter ego. But nonetheless, thank you also to the city of Royal Oak. On behalf of 515 and Pronto, we appreciate the designation of June as Pride Month and June 8th as Family Pride. So as Megan said, I strongly encourage you to come out and support. It's going to be an amazing event at the farmer's market, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
I am so sorry. I cannot speak off the cuff, but I swear it won't be long. In a time when the freedom to read is being challenged across the country, I am glad that I am able and encouraged to support my patrons in Royal Oak with books that reflect who they are, and even more importantly, show them that they are not alone. Thank you to the city for supporting efforts to make the LGBTQIA+ community a visible and vibrant part of Royal Oak, and by showing the youth of our city that they are accepted for who they are and who they will grow up to be. There's a moment in the frequently challenged graphic memoir Fun Home by Alison Bechdel referred to as the Ring of Keys moment, when the main character sees a butch lesbian for the first time, a ring of keys clanging from her belt loop, and realizes that the reason she has felt out of place for so long is because she's, she'd never seen a woman that looked like this. My goal as a librarian that works with young adults is to be visibly queer in a way that might give teens their Ring of Keys moment. I do my best to position myself in a place to support teens on their journey to be authentically themselves. I'm guilty in that I see myself in the teens that I work with, and I want them to see that they can be openly queer, trans, or non-binary, and that they can be celebrated for who they are. Family Pride goes a long way to showing them that their community accepts them and that they are surrounded by supporters, allies, and people like me who just want them to feel uplifted and proud to be who they are.
Megan and Becca, we are so proud to have you on the staff at our library, and just hearing those words make us even more proud as a community. And let's give another round. I mean... And Library Director Irwin's here as well in support. So we look forward to an amazing event. We hope to see you all there, and let's celebrate this June. All right, lots of papers here today. Give me a second to organize. All right, this brings us to item six, which is a presentation from the Representatives of Municipal Parking Systems, Inc. I'm going to have Chief kind of kick us off here, Chief Moore, and then we'll kind of let you take the lead on this one, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners. I'd like to introduce Paul Martin and Mike Asher. They're both from MPS Parking Systems. They've prepared a presentation for you tonight, so unless you have any objections, I'd like to invite them up and they could give their presentation.
Gentlemen, come on up. Welcome. And I think you guys have this all queued up. You know how to do the presentation mode. Okay, perfect.
All right. Thanks for having me. Paul Martin, Chief Operating Officer for Municipal Parking Services. I wanted to put together a little agenda for you. Next slide. Kind of walk you through some history from the beginning of our installation, and overview on the challenges we've had, and where we are today, and summarize things for you. The MPS solution services 723 on-street spaces. It's comprised of all of our technology that we develop ourselves and support it, Sentry Mobile app, Sentry meters, Sentry parking sticks, and the Sentry Enforcement app. The meters were installed in November of last year, and for the first 30 days, we did the issuance of warning tickets. And we used that as our vehicle to determine if we were ready to proceed with the automated enforcement. Based on the results from that time period, collectively, we made the decision to go live with the automated enforcement on December 6th. Things started off well. Towards the end of the year, the city received feedback from parkers around knowledge of the overall system, that there was a lack of knowledge. Some of the signage, the user interfaces was confusing to parkers. Key things was max time. Our system strictly enforces that as part of the technology we implement. And that was new and surprising to the parkers that, how strict it is, and we're just enforcing the policies of the city. Parkers weren't aware of the ability of what we call TrueUp, to basically unlock a pending violation. You park and you're able to park and go about your business, and when you return, you're able to TrueUp, pay for the time that you've used in your parking session before you leave. The community was unaware of that feature capability, as well as the knowledge of the advanced feature of the mobile app where you can select auto pay. And basically, you don't even need your app, the mobile app with you. You park in your space, we identify you by your license plate, and we deduct your account based on the time you stay. Again, you got to adhere to the max time, but you don't have to do anything. And so there was a lack of knowledge about that capability. And then just basic knowledge about how do I properly identify the space I'm parked in. Some of our stickers, signage, et cetera, and communications wasn't clear around that. We went into the holidays, continued working through the holidays as a group, teamed up with the police department. We met with some of the merchants and the DDA. And in early January, when the court got involved to judicate tickets, an issue was identified that was a shortcoming of our joint integration and testing with the court system, where we're pushing violations to the court for adjudication, where the data was lacking an appearance date. And what was happening is default notices were being sent to parkers when in fact they may have not received the first notice yet or around the same time. And so the data did not have that field. We quickly corrected that based on the requirement and request of the court to implement that particular field in the integration we had done together and resolve that. During this time of pause in January, because of this issue, the city MPS challenged ourselves to really look at the feedback that was coming in at the time. And we made enhancements. We had daily meetings, some of the chief staff, the chief included. We really dug into what was being said, gathered information, requested additional information. We needed details to really get to the root cause of some of the issues. As a result of that, and some of the great work that the police chief and his team did by collecting some of that information, we were able to identify some deficiencies in our detection, as well as our payment recognition. A lot of it stemmed around the back-to-back rates, what we call the transition from the daytime rates to the evening. It's a complex piece of area of the product, and so there was shortcomings. We agreed jointly to hold enforcement in a pause state until we clearly could identify and get to the root cause and provide fixes for the issues. We put the...
I'm sorry, can I ask a question real quick here? Well, I just want to clarify before I move on to another slide. That's okay. Commissioner Collo, real quick. I just want to share, on the previous slide, you didn't detect any of these issues in December?
Yeah.
You didn't have detection issues or payment issues of any sort in December?
I don't... I think the issues existed in December. We just didn't have the information to identify.
Because I was just thinking, your slide said it was mostly user error, but that wasn't actually the case, right?
We did do a very large release at the end of the year, which we think complicated the situation as well.
Okay. I just want to clarify that before you...
Yep. Okay. So we held things in pause. We did weekly updates, pushed fixes out in a weekly timeframe, tested, confirmed on-street that those fixes did address the issues, and we just continued that pattern until we reached a point where we felt jointly that we had stability and issue, known issues had been addressed. Throughout this entire time, we've been fully transparent with the city. The city's been very transparent with us, and collectively, we've worked hard to get where we are today. We use this time as well, next slide, to look at what can we do better? What things can we improve upon to further help the situation? I personally met a couple of times with some of the merchant groups and individuals and took their feedback. We enhanced some of our health checks. We have, it's a highly innovative system that, you know, does automated health checks all day long. We enhanced some of that to capture some of the information that we were having to ask to get from parkers and so forth. We made improvements. We created a daily report that automatically comes from those health checks directly to the police department so that they can see exactly what we see, fully transparent. We also looked at feedback and requests of some of the merchants of, give the parkers ability a way to tell you what their issue is instead of having to tell us. And then it gets transferred, right? Every time someone says something, the information can change along the way. I had no fault anymore. So we thought through this, and we implemented a feature that went live today on Washington Street called Text My Gov. There's a little icon on the top of the meters that, anyone can press that and report a problem. It's really simple. It takes a snapshot of the environment for us. It comes directly into the MPS case management system, which gets assigned to some of our technicians to look at. And so it's really, the intent is to hear directly from our customer, in this case, the voice of the parkers, all right? So that we're not having to kind of trace, well, what happened? Where were they? And so forth. And give another means. It's really an industry first. No other meter can do this type of thing, but we have an infrastructure that is totally networked and allows for this capability and innovation to occur. So it was a recommendation out of one of the meetings we had, and we implemented it. I'm sure there'll be some feedback around that, but it is live today. But we recognize there's been some shortcomings. We have put forth corrective actions. We've never steered away from the issues. We take full responsibility for the shortcomings we've had in our software. Our hardware infrastructure, our cloud infrastructure, our network infrastructure has been solid through this entire time. It's the backbone of our capabilities. It allows us to do what we do and... It allows us to do what we do and bring stability when needed. So today, things are looking good. Back in March 18th, we collectively decided to re-enable automated enforcement, and that has remained in place today. And we are seeing stability as we speak right now from that time. Summary, we're committed to address issues as they come up. There will be issues. I believe wholeheartedly that they will be isolated to individual sessions or devices as opposed to systemic, system-wide issues that we have experienced at times. I think we're in a good place overall. We're staying committed. We'll continue the daily conversations we have with some of the team members as well as the ongoing weekly meetings we have. And we'll do what's necessary to bring satisfaction and meet expectations. Overall, during this time, we've had over 275,000 successful parking sessions recorded in our system. 140,000 have successfully paid for their session, have gone about their business. We are seeing month-over-month continuous improvement of the learning curves changing for the better from the parking community. I highlighted some points there. It continues to go up. People are adopting the mobile app more, some of the advanced features, you know, leveraging TrueUp. And compliance overall continues to grow month-over-month. And in fact, this month, I think we're going to hit an all-time high of around 60%. That's the way it's trending right now. So we're here. We're committed to do what's necessary to meet expectations and ensure our system delivers what's promised. So thank you.
All right. I'll open it up to questions. Any questions? Oh, Commissioner Macy?
Thank you. So you mentioned that quite a few of the problems have been fixed. We've continued to see and hear, receive complaints about some things that are going wrong. I think one of the ones that I'm hearing, still hearing the most frequently is about pulling in right after someone has left or within minutes after someone has left and being told that your time has expired and there's nothing you can do to reset the system at that point. Is there any fix in the future for that?
You know, I believe that's going to be one of those situations that's going to be unique to that particular device. We are not seeing anything, any evidence that is a system-wide systemic issue. And I'd like to promote the report a problem. There's the ability to report such a problem, and that's going to really help capture things. And we'll get to the bottom of it. And, you know, on a daily basis, as issues like that are seen, I'm confident we can resolve them quickly.
So speaking of quickly, you mentioned that you've been pushing out sort of weekly updates.
Yep.
But it's the end of May now, and it seems like these have been a little bit slow coming. Like, we were aware of a lot of these problems in January. So I guess I haven't seen the weekly updates. It seems like it's more, there's been a longer delay between when we report something. Are there dedicated teams who are working on our issues that we're seeing, or how is it?
Yes. Yes, we've dedicated. It's been top priority inside our company. And there's different products and technologies involved, mobile app, Century Link itself, the back office enterprise, et cetera. But there's been, yeah, some of the things, the updates, you know, may not be visible to you and others, but it has been occurring and it will continue. But I don't see right now that there's a need for it, and that's all based on known issues. And, but, yeah.
I'm also just curious about the background. I mean, I know we're not the first city where this has been installed, and yet there's quite a number of issues that were identified for the first time here. Is there something unique about the Royal Oak situation?
Yeah, there is some uniqueness. The back-to-back rate block scenario has a lot of edge cases to it. It creates some complex situations for us that we had some shortcomings related to that. In some cases, I mentioned the release that we did at the end of the year, right before the holidays. That had some shortcomings. And I'd say in ways, we had too much, too many things changed in a release at one time. And so what we did, these incremental weekly releases that we did, we really took our time and made sure that we kind of fixed it right the first time and didn't put through the city through thrashing of, well, we think we got it fixed. No, not yet, and so forth. And so that's the approach we took. And collectively, you know, everybody agreed to it, and I think it was the right approach. Instead of just rolling it all up and doing a one big release in March or February, whatever that time, and putting at risk that that wasn't going to be right.
Okay. What's the outlook on the lots?
The lots, we took a little bit of a backseat on that to focus on the on-street. We are working through, the city asked us to try and make the lots operate as close as possible to the way the on-street works from a payment perspective and a Parker experience. And so-
I'm sorry, the city asked for that?
Yeah, from the police department through the city. Yep. I mean, that's the expectations. That wasn't the expectations long ago. So there's some changes, like being able to leverage TrueUp in the parking lot. That capability never existed in our solution. And so that's what we've been working on and-
Do the parking, do the lots use cameras as well?
Yes, they do.
So they have, there's cameras on every spot in the lots?
No, it's on the entry and exits.
Okay. And so we've seen from the staff that we've received that about a third of the sessions are being paid with coins. And my understanding is that coins can't be used for the lots. Is that correct?
That's correct. Our technology doesn't support coins in the lots.
So I'm not sure how familiar you are with geography here or where I am, maybe. But behind our parking garage, there's a line of Century spots that back up to the restaurants and right off the main street, you know, talking about?
Yep.
So those appear to be that you punch your plate into a spot, into a machine? Is that how those work, or do those also have cameras on them?
If you're talking about the on-street spaces, they have-
They're like in an alley, basically.
Oh, so there's a couple of one-way streets that have the cameras on the entrance and exit of the one-way street.
Okay.
Those are the head-in spaces.
Okay. So I hear you're saying that the city's asking for this to be like a fairly consistent system from each piece for the other. But as far as you're concerned, on Washington, where we currently have the reverse angle parking, if we were to change that to be head-in parking where it was a system where people just put their plates in, is that a problem on your end? Something that could be handled by MPS?
Putting the plates in, that wasn't the conversation around that if you were to change the head-in. Let me be clear on this. The head-in spaces doesn't change anything with the Century system if you were to change the Washington back-in spaces to head-in. What it does change is it eliminates the two features that are related to Parker experience, and that's the TrueUp capability and the auto-pay concierge capability. You would not be able to leverage that in those spaces. But the overall system, normal credit card, put your space number in, all of that works just the way it is, even head-in or back-in.
Okay. I think I got it, but I'm just going to say it back to you to make sure I have it right. If we were to change the reverse angle spots on Washington back to head-in the way they were before, the Century system handles that just fine, but you can no longer have the advantages of TrueUp and auto-pay?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that's all my questions.
You have to manually enforce those spaces because we can't do that, but that's, so nothing changes from the Parker payment and recognize your space and all that. You still know the vehicle is there or not.
So I want to just kind of go off of what Commissioner Macy had started with about the expired parking spot where you pull in and then people are struggling, like, I don't understand what happened. I just pulled in. How could it be expired? I pull out. You know, probably what a Parker should do is, you know, I learned this at Michigan State, is they still give you a ticket even if the meter's blinking. But it creates a huge frustration for people that are visiting our retailers, visiting our restaurants, because it's just a, you know, it's an inconvenience. It's an unnecessary worry, like, am I getting a ticket now? And I got to worry about this thing coming in the mail. Huge dissatisfier. And I understood you said, okay, well, there could be a particular meter, but, and I can tell you anecdotally, not even anecdotally, it happened to me on the reverse angle parking. It happened to somebody one time doing a field report for a very popular radio station here. The one time he did it. And I've heard from several different people that the same occurrence has popped up. And so while I understand, like, there's always a learning curve, like, okay, how do you use the system? You know, we have to have a little patience. I understand, you know, there's going to be glitches in the beginning. My question is, is that other than the self-reporting button and all of this, you have quality assurance data, you have software that should be able to, like this health check software, should be able to catch these things. So it's not just the mayor of Royal Oak and a news reporter saying, hey, this is happening. You know, how do you, you know, tell me what went wrong? Rather, I would imagine, and again, by way of background, I come from the auto industry and, you know, the check engine light comes on and, you know, the, I didn't turn it on, you know? It does a diagnostic on the engine and says, okay, we had some misfires and, you know, go get your engine checked. What, I mean, I guess what's out there in your software suite where we can understand, because what I don't know right now is I have a lot of anecdotal information-
Yep.
-and it is in a large abundance, but we don't have any data other than all that, you know, anecdotal responses back. So how do you, or what quality assurance data do you have? What diagnostic data do you have? What sort of things do you have in place to say, you know what? This is the mayor's imagination? Or this is actually happening and it's happening like, you know, this is just bad luck and it only happens .001%? Or it's happening 10%? Because right now, we don't, we don't know. We need to understand that. So help me understand a little bit about your data.
Yeah, so our health checks, basically, when I say a meter, I'm referring to a meter or a baller that's monitoring a particular space, okay? So you mentioned that a reporter, and I think you're talking about the reporter. I think we're trying to find out the exact date and time, but I believe, we believe it was Thursday when that occurred. That particular situation, we're looking to confirm this, but that particular device that's being monitored by the meter, there's what we call, it's basically a USB port that our detection technology connects to, and it's a wireless connectivity and it creates a magnetic field over the space, et cetera, to detect a car coming and going and so forth. At one point, there was a coin jam on that meter, and that coin jam was cleared. We believe when that coin clearance process occurred, there was a little barrel plug that came out of its seating as part of that process, which took that detection device offline. And so we receive alerts when those things occur, and we believe that alert had occurred on Thursday. And we believe that's a scenario that, you know, it's a rare occurrence. We haven't seen that to my recollection, and my team is digging into it further once we confirm that the parking session was tied to that scenario. But those type of alerts come in 24/7 into our system. The health checks run every 15 minutes on all the devices. And it captures logs of information. I mean, it's a lot of detailed information. Some of it percolates to the top of a certain severity level of alerts. And when team members look at those alerts, they dig into them and extrapolate and understand what the alerts are. Some of them are health checks that maybe, you know, network bounced, packets dropped, and it came right back up. And it doesn't cause anything, but it's something to look at, and you look for trends.
Is that something that you can provide to our chief to understand? Because we have a whole crew of PEOs out there trying to, you know, what's anecdotal? What's real? And I think it's helpful for us, especially in the community, because, I mean, the confidence is not as strong as it should be in the system, right? And to understand and be able to say, you know, .0001% this happens, or if it happens 2%,
Right.
I mean, that's a big difference, right? And we can understand what those issues are, and we can work and educate the public and, you know, hold everybody's feet accountable to fix them. Because right now, we just have anecdotal information. We don't know how to set policy. We don't know how to, you know, but if we have that sort of data that we can get to the chief, he can look at it, and his team can look at it, and they can start to help, you know, shape strategy and support whatever needs to be supported to fix the issue.
And I'll give you an example. The coin jam I referred to in your prior system, enforcement officers would have to go and look for coin jams or rely upon the public to tell you there was a coin jam, et cetera. So we took those, our system detects these alerts, that there's a coin jam, our credit card reader failure, et cetera, component failure. That is sent to them daily so that the chief and his staff get these alerts. And they know that when they come in in the morning or at night, that there's three devices that have a coin jam right now. No one else has to get involved. They go to them and they clear the jam. And so the Parker experience improves from that perspective where those alerts are going straight to them. So as we continue, as I mentioned, we've enhanced our logging to further enhance some of these alerts to do just what you're asking, to continue to provide that information to the frontline, so to speak.
Okay, so we can get that alert data, like, report, like, all the alerts that you guys get. We can slice it up and say, okay, this is a coin jam. This is a we-don't-know.
Yep.
But all of those alerts that you get, because there's some sort of failed parking experience, you capture that, and then we can get it and we can bounce it against some of the complaints that we get, because they're the first line.
Right.
And they get like, hey, man, I paid for this thing. What's going on?
Absolutely.
And then we can start to, you know, make those matches or see if there's things in your report that isn't showing up, right?
Absolutely.
Because there's things that you may not have alerts to that we find through complaints. So if you're saying we can get that data, that's really important to us.
Yeah, and one of the enhancements I talked about is related to credit card readers. If someone is swiping their credit card multiple times and not having success, that generates an alert to us, that there may be an issue with that reader. It may not be just the fact that the Parker had their orientation of their card incorrect or something else was wrong, right? You know, so that's what I'm talking about. We're putting a lot of stuff in there to give us visibility of that true Parker, voice of the Parker, what is going on directly to us.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, when someone has an issue, like you said with the coin jam, are they getting a ticket if the meter is not functioning?
I don't know. I don't know a lot about parking.
So both my staff and the chief's staff, when they review the parking tickets, any type of error that occurs during that session is flagged, and in most cases, it's automatically voided. In some cases, it does require one of us to look at it during the process and go, you know, that because there was a coin error, doesn't mean that they didn't actually make a successful coin payment. Maybe it was a foreign coin or something like that. So that information is exposed to them during that process.
I know some others have questions. Commissioner Cole, you had questions? Anybody? And Commissioner Dubb? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to see you again. We've been in multiple meetings together, talked about this for the last several months now. So I guess one question I do have, you know, you talked about the spot detection. I think that is probably the, one of the last remaining things we hear a lot about. At one point, we did hear a lot about people at the app might be being charged. They stopped for 15 minutes, but they're charged for two hours even though they've been gone. Locally, I have a friend who parked downtown on Sunday, and then he was charged for a session on Monday. And I think, if you tell me right, those, that error has been corrected. Is that right?
Yes. All of those type of errors that we're aware of have been corrected.
So I guess, you know, one thing, and I think it'd be good to share with the public, do you have a log of, from November, when we first installed? I actually assume you guys have a log of all the errors that you've fixed in the system?
Yep.
Can you share that with the city?
We certainly share it with the city. I'd have to talk with others. Um, we certainly share it with the city. I, I'd have to, um, talk with others to determine what public information, some of that's intellectual property type of stuff, so.
Yeah, so I think that, so what's, what's left on the list? What's on the list right now that's not fixed?
Right now, what's on the list is lots, focused on the lots right now, and certainly if anything new comes up, I'm certainly, uh, interested in this issue that occurred on Thursday with the reporter, to get to the bottom of it. Um, I, again, I don't believe that is any kind of systemic wide issue. I believe it is centralized to the device that was at that spot.
So beyond that, there's no other software or hardware issues left to, to improve on? Um, okay, because I, I know, I guess we could ask for savings at some point to, and the chief about what's left, at least on the city side to, to get that, but I, I think that, that you have long-standing list. Um, you know, one thing, so back to the spot detection, um, what kind of Q and A, or, you know, QC are we doing here? You know, why don't we send 700 volunteers to every spot at once and see what happens?
Well, we, we actually do a lot of that on a daily basis, is go through all the spaces. But, um, you know, this is a, it's, there's some complexity there, and we did have some shortcomings that caused us to stub our toe in a big way. And, you know, um, yeah, it took, it took some time to unravel that and get it right again.
Unfortunately, though, MPS having a sub toe doesn't mean much to anyone in this room. It, it's Royal Oak, right? It's, you might have a sub toe. We have a black eye and a bloody nose right now because of this. And there are some policy issues. You know, there's the backend angle parking that is a long discussion to be had at this table, but I think that the rollout itself, you know, the, ish, the hardware issues, I'll say hardware and software interchangeably. I, I think at first, you know, it's, it's gonna take a long time to recover from some of those.
Yeah, I think, you know, I can just go off of the data, what the data tells us. There was some issues, but there was also some successes too.
Sure.
And, um, you know, that's, yeah.
Unfortunately, I'm sure, you know, at least my line of business, no one celebrates my success. It's always my last failure that really hurts me. And I think that's where we are still at this point, is that we still, you know, just as we said, we had someone in here on a popular radio station, pull up and have an issue, and I think everyone in this room has at some point experienced that. So I guess my question to you is, what can we do to test the system in the very near future to see what spots are working and not working?
Um, yeah, there's, there's, there's things we can do. Um, we have staff in place to go through the spaces every day and, uh, can, you know, go through these logs we see every day and, um...
Do you talk, do you mean physically go through the spaces or look on the backend?
This is remote, most of it's remote, but I, I do have field technicians that are out here and go through it as well.
Yeah.
Um, we work very closely with the enforcement officers and ambassadors that MPS has provided, um, to get feedback and, you know...
Because, you know, I, if, if you came to us and said, you know what, I sent my staff out and they parked in each and every spot, and they know that that dongle's working in every spot, then that's one thing that we know, this isn't, you know, this is a different issue besides a hardware issue. But right now, it's hard to know that's not a hardware issue when random samples are seeing it happen.
And I mean, I, I, you know, like you said, I, we've met together. I've been out here numerous times. I personally, I've probably parked in 10 different locations today and act as best as I can as someone who doesn't know the system. And, um, backend spaces, post office spaces, parallel down the one-way streets, I did it all today. And, you know, I, I, I critique our system and I look for issues. I did not see anything today myself. And I'll continue to do that. I encourage my staff. They're out here every week doing stuff like that.
So I, I think you're saying, no, you won't send a staff member to all 700 spaces?
I'm sorry, sir.
It sounds like you're saying no, though, to send a staff member to touch, test each space.
Absolutely. If they, if you, if you need that commitment from us, absolutely. We can do that starting tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep, we'll go through every physical one, open up every device, double check, triple check, watch parking sessions, that, absolutely.
I, I, I think that will go a long way here.
All right. You got it.
And so talking, if I can, for just another moment, talk about Washington Avenue. Do you have a camera system? You know, I, I think, we've got a lot of discussions at this table about Washington Avenue. Washington Avenue is a thorn in everyone's side. Um, I think everyone would like to have a head-in parking situation, but we also want the true-up feature. Do you have cameras that you can mount higher? Is there a way that you have, that you can, if we were to go ahead in parking, is there a way that you can capture the license plates from the other side of the street with a different type of camera setup, so we can continue to offer that true-up system and alleviate some of the concerns that we've heard on Washington Avenue?
I think that's a, something that can, you know, we can consider, but, um, we also gotta think about the fact, do you want that many cameras across, you know, both sides of your street from an aesthetics perspective? You know, these, these are not just the small little bullet cameras. They would need to be a surveillance-type camera.
Like the ones in the parking lots, right?
Exactly.
I mean, what is it, about every light pole? You know, we have a light pole, right?
No, it's gonna be more than that, about every three to four spaces. Um, and that is entirely, um, new feature development capability, um, that, uh, at this point, I'll say is a roadmap item
Okay.
with our innovation and technology, and, um, it's something we absolutely could do, but, um, it's not ready, and I, trust me, this would be the last place I'd wanna try something there.
Feels like a lot of things we've tried new here, unfortunately.
You know?
Um, so then, uh, you know, and one thing about the spots where we're talking about them, I think we've talked about this in different meetings we've had, but I find that when someone parks at a kiosk, the kiosk is their baller. I'm, I'm assuming that those are the spots that issue the most tickets for someone not turning up or pulling away without knowing they have a ticket. There's a quarter-sized dot on the back of that baller to tell someone in that one spot that they are in violation. Is there a way to put that circle light on the bottom of that pole to indicate that space in a more profound way so people know, this is your spot, you have a ticket? Because, like I said, that, that small dot on the back of the kiosk is really not distinguishable.
Yeah. Um, there, there's not an easy way to do that.
Is there a hard way to do it that we can start talking about?
Yeah. Um, yeah, I'd like to, we haven't, the chief and I talked about some of this. I'd like to try and look at the data and really see that, you know, that's where we're seeing the violations and stuff, but...
Can you get that data to us?
What's that?
Can you get that data to us?
I think we can. It's, it's, that particular case, uh, situation is, um, yeah, it's gonna take a little time, but, um, I think we can do that. That's what I'd like to start with and see that truly is the case. And, um, that's, to put the light structure, um, can it be done? Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I, I just don't know what the magnitude of the work effort is there.
Yeah, because, you know, I, just being downtown, I see people look most confused, well, backend parking, but then second, at those particular spots. You know, you sit and watch, and I, I think people don't know they have tickets. And our number one goal is not to give someone a ticket in downtown Royal Oak. I mean, I want the true-up feature. I want people to be able to use it and, most importantly, successfully use it. And I could certainly see you had 19% true-up that, you know, I wonder if we move to a system if, quite frankly, I don't know why people prepay for parking at all. I don't know why we just pay when you leave. There's, there's no advantage to prepaying for parking, because you come in, you have two hours. So if you just come and enjoy downtown, and you go back to your car at the end of that hour and a half you're here, you pay for an hour and a half, you can leave without gaining a ticket.
That's correct.
Prepaying just means, gives you less time that you have to spend at the meter when you leave. So if you're spending time at the meter personally, I would pay when I leave because there's absolutely no need to prepay.
Absolutely correct.
And I wonder if that's a feature we turn into and put on the front screen, pay when you leave. That would probably drastically decrease the amount of confusion we have, because people are now only paying for the time they use, not guessing how much time they might use.
Yeah, so the feedback, um, is encouraged, and we're, as we sit here today, we, we are continuing to look at our screens and, and going back and forth with the police chief and his team on what more can we do? And so...
All right, well, I look forward to that testing starting tomorrow, and I'll, I'll let some other officials have questions.
And I appreciate the fact that you went out and tried a bunch of spots and, and, you know, testing is important. I think, I think what we're getting at is, um, you know, if you went to an ATM and it only worked 97%, it'd be a lot of pissed-off people around the world, you know? Hey, I got 40 bucks out, not 20. You know, well, close enough. You know, that would really make people angry. We're, we're kinda talking about the same thing here, right? If people get a ticket, it's, we're taking money out of their pocketbook, we're taking money out of our retailer's pocketbooks, our restaurant's pocketbooks, because that person may not come back. So it's like we're dealing with a situation where we need the same amount of fidelity as an ATM, and, um, that sort of reliance. Nobody questions. I mean, I count my money still. Uh, but, uh, most people just take the money out and you don't have too many issues. And then if there is an issue, there's a camera there, the machine can count, and the bank can take care of it. Um, so I think what we wanna do is get to a point where we have this information, this data, like, why are people getting tickets? Where are the systems failures? How do we match up the complaints? And how do we get that reporting? So for two reasons. One, we have to do better. We have to make this at ATM level, airplane level, you know, um, fidelity. Uh, and two, we gotta give people confidence, because, you know, sometimes it could be user error, and, you know, that's a different argument. But I, right now, I don't, all I know is anecdotally, a lot of people have come to me with issues that I, you know, people I trust, and myself included.
Yeah.
Although I don't trust me all the time, but I'll just trust myself for this purpose. Um, that there, that there's these issues, and, and there's no way, like, I mean, you're saying, okay, it could be the one meter, it could be an anecdotal coin thing, but I don't, we don't know that. You know what I mean? And I think that's where we're gonna really, if we're gonna, you know, um, get to the point where people have confidence in the system, and that's what we're talking about. This is the business of confidence. You know, you can have everything working, but if nobody has confidence, it's a big issue. Um, how do we get back confidence to say, yep, you can see all of this, check all the data, you can go back and check every meter. Not that Joe Public could do that, but we can go back and say, everything's working, and what we have is an issue where, um, you know, some people just refuse to pay, or whatever, like, we can, or there's just some user difficulty, but we can tackle those problems. But we gotta narrow it down, and we gotta have that information, uh, so we can, you know, build confidence in, in the parking system here. Because like Commissioner Cole said, it's, nobody's saying MPS. You know, we came with all these bells and whistles and things to improve the parking situation, and I don't feel that's the feedback we're getting, and I'm saying that lightly. But I'll go to Commissioner Dubbuck.
All right. Appreciate being here. I know we're digging on this pretty good, but it's a taste of what we've been getting from friends and family and everyone on the street for the last few months. Um, yeah, I, I'm, I was a fan of the system, yeah. Voted to bring it in. Like, I like everything about it in concept. Uh, make it easier to park, easier to pay, easier to not get a ticket. And the problem is, we're not hitting on any of those right now. There was always gonna be a learning curve, and I understand that. Um, there's clearly been struggles, as you've already described, with the software and some of the rollout. Because the question is, what more can you do in addition, you know, in addition to identifying issues and solving them, to help us, whether it's via the app or via the kiosk, to communicate these messaging, the messages we need to tell people to restore confidence and start making people feel like this is gonna work? Because I'm not, I'm talking about, like, I'm getting stuff from folks who are app savvy, tech savvy, you know, and open-minded about, yeah, this is a different way to do it, but cool, and having negative experiences, getting tickets, thinking they did everything right, and still, you know, getting violations. And so first and foremost, the only metric that matters to me is compliance is going up and violations are going down. Do we share that goal?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you had mentioned that things are stable now, but stable is not good. Like, I want compliance to go up and violations to go down.
What I meant by stable is the instability of the software-related issues.
Okay.
But compliance is definitely month over month going up, getting better.
Okay.
And better.
What ability do you have in app or on the kiosk to communicate messages? Like, are we really hammering when someone parks on the street, this is two hours max, you have to move this vehicle in two hours, no matter what you pay, or you will get a violation? Can we, can we throw a lightbox on their app when they park there and let them know this is what's happening in this space?
I think, um, you know, with the recent user interface changes we've made in enhancements, we are absolutely promoting that. I mean, the parker has to hit next on that screen and see that message, um, that it's strictly enforced. They cannot bypass that messaging. It used to be a scroll message, and, I mean, we revamped that whole interface.
Okay. Have we added that language, or would you be willing to add to that language? Uh, park in a deck for free for two hours?
I, we can bring that up. I mean, the, the messaging is, is available, you know, to put on the meters, what you wanted to, to say. I mean, we have not denied any messaging that the city has asked for.
I mean, I would definitely like to find a way we could put in front of every, anything, anyone looking to park in the city is interfacing with, all decks, two hours free. Everybody should know that. Um, and I think this is a, a mechanism to do that. Um, with that, I think my colleagues have covered most of my other questions. You know, I appreciate you being here and sharing the information. Appreciate that. You know, you are committed to this partnership and work with our department and resolving issues in real time, because every time someone has a bad experience, it hits the echo chamber of social media, and everyone thinks it's 100%, even, even it's 40%, which is unacceptable. It sounds like it's 100% of people having a really hard time, which is not helpful.
I think one thing I'll ask you is, you hear of issues as, um, as commissioners and mayor, is, I know you, everyone's busy is, when you hear an issue, see it all the way to the end. See what the end result is backed. You know, what was the root cause of that issue? Um, I think you, you'll be impressed with the level of detail we're providing and, and being transparent and working and collecting that around every session or every issue that we see. And, um, not always does that go from, you know, my technical staff to the technicians on, on the city, up to individuals like yourself and go, okay, that's what that was. You just know that that happened, and then another day comes around, right? And you have another thing to deal with in your busy lives. But just every now and then, take, take a few of them and see it all the way through. Um, you've got my contact information, feel free to call me and jointly go through it together. Um, I'm available to do that. I think you'll be surprised.
Thank you. Commissioner Hunt?
I just had a couple of questions. You stated that one of the last things left in this process was the lots. Do you know when that will be done? It's been about six months now.
Yeah, I, I, I don't. I mean, uh, it's not gonna be another six months. I mean, I think we're, we're pushing to do a 30, 45-day window, but I'll give you the, the guidance there. It's gotta be right. I don't wanna have to come back to this podium and talk about the lots. All right? So, um, you know, we're gonna put extraordinary emphasis around quality on that, and, um, it is new feature capabilities and so...
Can you give a percentage of how complete you are with the reconfiguration or...
We're, we're in some of our final test phases internally, and we've gotta go external with that.
And what's the process with the Zitex MyGov? So if someone were to submit an issue, this isn't gonna be an issue or a situation where you look at it and say, oh, something happened in the past, so this must be an issue. Someone's gonna actually come out and take a look?
So when you hit to report a problem, it brings up a little screen that says, is it a coin problem, a credit card problem? And you just hit that and, and nothing else is required from the parker from that point to report the problem.
But will someone from your company come out to take a look, or someone will take a look for the actual song?
Yes, absolutely. Um, there's also a third option that allows you to provide a more detailed form and fill it out. There's a QR code that pops up, and you can scan the QR code with your phone, and you get a form, and you can give detailed information around that. That goes to the, I think it goes to your department, the Zitex MyGovs immediately. That message goes to them, gets replicated and goes right into our system. A case is opened up, uh, assigned to an individual, and we collectively, uh, work through that. We just went live today with it, and I know we're gonna go through some iterations to make it a very valuable, uh, asset for us both.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that, and, you know, I don't wanna belater this conversation, and I take you at your word that, um, you know, I'd like to sit down with you and, and Chief Moore, and I have some ideas about some of the information we can capture. While I appreciate that opt-in, you know, form, and, you know, that will provide some information and it will be helpful. Statistically, I mean, people just don't like to opt into stuff. I mean, I gotta tell you, I got three kids. I just wanna pick up some damn tacos and get out, you know, and probably risk getting the $20 ticket if the machine's not working, because, you know, quite frankly, hungry kids aren't good for anybody around. So, um, you know, I just don't see that as being the best full proof. What we wanna get to is a point where we have, you know... We want to get to is a point where we have, you know, actionable, you know, non-opt-in, non-biased, you know, data that you're picking up with your software on how you do those loops and what pictures you're taking, how you corroborate them with complaints that the chief may be getting or these forms that you're getting. And say, you know, narrow it down to, this is user error, this is hardware error, this is software error, this is some other thing we have to look into. But, you know, it has to be at that level of, you know, ATM compliance. I mean, I keep using that example because we're talking about people's pocketbooks and we're talking about the livelihood of our downtown. So we have to have all the tools in place and all the best minds in place and, you know, I, I'll take you up on that offer. And if nobody here minds, I'll run a few ideas by you and see if we can get some better information. Because I'll tell you, you can say my incident was, you know, a one-off, but it's like everybody has a one-off. Let's count them. How many one-offs do we have? Do we have 15,000 one-offs or 15 that just get elevated on social media? I don't know. You know? Okay.
Commissioner Purush?
Just very quickly, because essentially the rest of the commission has asked all of the questions that I had on my list. But I think I just want to reiterate what a couple of other people have said, that is, the more data sharing there is between your company and, in our, in our case, the police department who's analyzing it, the better. And there are now some significant gaps that the department feels that they need to have filled in order to understand how the system is working. And, and the mayor just kind of enumerated some of those as to why people are not paying. And there's a significant number of people who just don't pay. We need to know why. And we think that that data exists, but until we know what that is, we won't know how to fix it. So I, I just want to reiterate the, the comments that other people have made, that we need more data sharing in order to, to fix this. And it's something that, that we all want to fix. In my particular instance, what I'm hearing from more people than, oh, I'm just, you know, I had this terribly frustrating problem, it's, I don't want to go downtown. I don't go downtown because I hear that the problem is terrible and so I'm not going to even go risk it. It's not worth it. So I'm hearing just system avoidance completely rather than the errors that are popping up. And that's just as bad, if not worse, than the system errors. At least in some instances, people are trying and they're having issues, but then they'll come back. What I'm hearing from is people who just say, I'm not going downtown. And that's, and that's a terrible situation. So that's kind of where we're coming from. So the more you can share data, the better we can work towards making this a better situation.
Any other questions? All right. So in summary, what I hear is you guys are committed to fixing these issues with us. And I think we're going to immediately, as quickly as we can, take the next step and start to, I know the city manager here has memorialized some things. And I'll put some personal time into this to share my experience in a whole different industry that has a very, you know, highly consequential reliance on data and information to, to, for safety reasons. So what I can impart on you might be helpful. We're not asking you to spend millions of dollars. Just look at things in a different way to solve this and make sure that we, we have, I think, the best downtown in all of Michigan, the best businesses. And we don't want this to be a detractor. And because the economic cost to our community pales in comparison to what the cost of a parking system is. So we need to get it right. We get, we, and, you know, you probably knew that when you did your due diligence. As Town Matters, we do everything with excellence and so we want to do parking with excellence too. Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for your time. We'll talk very, very soon. Okay. That brings us to item seven on tonight's agenda, which is public comment. The city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now's the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any city-related issue, whether or not it's on the agenda or not. As there are no public hearings scheduled for tonight, now will be the only time to address the city commission. And when you're up here, ask that you direct your comments to the city commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please make your way to the center aisle and line up. We're going to do that tonight since we have a little bit of a full house. Wait to be recognized by me, the mayor. I'm going to ask that Deb Anderson just jump in front real quick because she is, she's going to have an announcement to make. And, and there, okay, we should be, comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker, not per topic. There's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. Once you get done with your public comment, if you can kind of veer to the right, if any of you are Catholic and you get communion at Mass, you kind of know the procedure. Nothing different here. And please know that we won't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and we'll address those questions when the agenda topic is discussed or refer to the proper city department if the matter is not scheduled to be discussed tonight. And of course, staff, particularly a city manager break here is taking notes. So if you don't wish to speak tonight, that's okay. Feel free to reach out to us via email, at the grocery store, you name it, we're here. So Ms. Anderson, welcome.
Hi, I'm Deb Anderson, 1028 Wyandotte. And I'm here on behalf of the Historical Society and we're really excited because we're having our pancake breakfast for the first time since 2019. It's on Memorial Day at Farmer's Market from seven to noon. And we want the whole community to come out and have the best pancakes in town. $6 all you can eat for adults, $3 for kids. And it's great. So come join us and we'd love to see everyone there.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Thank you to the Historical Society for supporting Memorial Day and the Pancake Breakfast. And it's good to see everyone back this year.
It's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Lori London. I own Wright Impressions at 407 South Washington. I'm also a board member of the DDA. I have come to tell you that I've changed my mind since I was last here. First, I thought that the back end angled parking was my main concern in Washington Avenue. Still a concern, but the bigger overall, overall arching problem is this parking system in and of itself. We would not have back end angled parking if not for the system. Six months since installation, the system fails each and every day. Every day, even today, when he said there's no more problems today. Customers coming into my store, I'm timed out, can't read the meter, help me with the meter. I'll continue on my things as time's ticking. On a great day, I just said this myself, on a great day and I go out there, I might have 60% of cars in Washington in compliance. That was his goal. If I did 60% on my job, that's a failure. 60% six months in, that is not, that's not great. That's 40% towards 100%. I, I'm so upset. All right. So 60% on a great day. Prior to Century Parking, on a good day, we would have 100% compliance. Imagine that. The city of Royal Oak has put up a giant roadblock to people wanting to enjoy our town. I see it as a giant do not enter. It's a pop-up driver's ed test, except in this scenario, it's something you never had to have, never had done before. Let's stop traffic and see if you can get back into this parking spot in the angle just to win the prize. But wait, that's not all. There are technical problems of hoops, technical hoops, downloading the app, adding your credit cards, see if you can get everything to work within the five minutes. Because guess what? If you haven't done it within five minutes, your spot expires and you must move your car and try again. The city makes it hard, not, if not impossible. Day after day, me and my staff have to be the meter maids. We have to help people every single day. Why? Why should this be my job? Why should this be so difficult parking a car? Feeding the meter should be easy. The system should not have to have this many consistent technical failures. Even when we try to help, we are still not successful. It tells me it's timed out. Forty-seven seconds and I'm going to get to my analogy. This much I know for sure, people tend to follow the path of least resistance. For me and my fellow business owners of Washington, this means they do not return. Trust us, when you tell, I'll tell you, they are not coming back. I see it every day. They shop and eat elsewhere. I want to skip to my analogy. Imagine the city purchased a fleet of new fire trucks. Our smart trained fierce firefighters struggle every day with the new equipment. Nothing on the truck is intuitive. The technology is bugging. Nothing works consistently. Even the fire hoses have a special way of attaching to the hydrants. Meanwhile, there's a fire in Washington Avenue and the fire chief tells us, we have shiny new equipment to help you out, but just wait. Give us a few years and we'll figure it out to put the fire. Well, I don't have a few years. My business is suffering every day.
I could go on.
Sue Fabian, 316 Midland. I'm here to speak on Save the Main. Mr. Janna, I don't know if you're here, but, because I don't know what you look like, but you are in a unique position to embody the zero, the pre-reformed Ebenezer Scrooge or the hero by insisting on a win, win, win. The city wins with whatever you do as your development will generate desperately needed income, given the multimillion dollar general fund deficits imminently projected. The developer wins even under the Scrooge plan. The big question is, do the people win? Of course, money is important to both the city and the developer, but is profit only to be seen in dollars and cents like Mr. Scrooge. It is abundantly clear how loved the Main Art Theater is from the testimonial scores of Main affectionados over the past many weeks. Mr. Janna, you would be a hero to allow the community to also win by preserving the entire building and working around it. If not that, you would still have some community win if you built a micro theater preserving some of the historic seats and other Main Art Theater memorabilia. You will be a zero if you were not to give the community some type of win and self-inflict substantially bad PR. If you are to choose the Scrooge path, then keeping the marquee is no sign at all of goodwill. It just allows you to benefit from the historic landmark while the community gets nothing. But if you choose this route, then open the Main Art Theater doors so the community can get one last opportunity to visit and say goodbye. Let there be an admission charge with proceeds going to Save the Main group to help them kickstart an art theater in another location. Donate the historic seats and what other, whatever other memorabilia you can for their efforts. Finally, to the city commission, there's been no legal opinion rendered on where the line stands, on how far you can go to insist on some form of community win. All the city attorney said in the planning commission meeting was that if you go too far, you are telling a private owner how they have to build their development. It had no legal substance with no legal case foundation. I expect more from a city attorney. In past commissions, community wins were demanded by the commission. Finally, the planning commission never went through a final review after instructing the owner to use best efforts in working with Save the Main group. Even Mr. Casada noted that another planning commission meeting should occur. Send it back to them. Let the people be served and not severed. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Emily Revard. I was born and raised in Royal Oak on South Laurel Street in the house my parents still live in. And I grew up going to the Main Art Theater. And this is a place that I felt like I fit in and it's a very important place to me and it's a part of my heart. And, and I just want to point out that part of what makes a great city is having a multi-dimensional city, one that has spaces for many different kinds of people, including artists. And the main art is that space and it draws artists to the city. And I think that because Royal Oak already has plenty of condos, plenty of commercial spaces, the main art is such a historical and culturally important place that it, it's part of what makes Royal Oak unique. It draws people in. And I think that that is an important thing to consider as you're voting on this. And I also want to say that this space is good for our youth because it exposes them to different narratives. It exposes them to films that they wouldn't see in the main, in other, you know, mainstream theaters. And even the kid that I grew up with across the street, he, he premiered his film at the main art when he was graduating from high school. I believe that's when it was. And now he's in LA and he's working on films. So it's important for our youth to have a place that they can get exposed to different kinds of art forms and to be able to pursue their own, own dreams. So I just implore you to think deeply about this and consider its importance to the citizens and not just the citizens of Royal Oak, but people that come from all over to visit the main. And once it's gone, it's gone, you know? This place has stood the test of time and to demolish it would just be a shame. So just ask that you consider our voices and consider what it means to us. So thank you for listening and I just hope that as you're voting, you think deeply about this and consider what legacy you want to leave on this city. I also have a comment from my mother, if I can read that from her.
I'm sorry, we have a whole line up today.
Janice Wagman. Like Commissioner Dubb, I was very much in favor of this parking system when it was originally presented by the chief and we had the community engagement. One of my key questions was, can you use coins everywhere? Because a lot of seniors don't use apps, they don't use anything. And then come to find out, nope, on these surface parking lots, you can't. And that's, you've, at that point, you've cut out a lot of seniors from being able to use it. Also, there was no mention of reverse angle parking, which is a difficulty. I can parallel park like nobody's business, but that reverse angle I can't do. And no mention of software problems. So this is a big issue. And the solution is not to put in parallel parking. You lose 30 spaces and your record for parallel parking is no handicap, none. Wherever there's parallel parking, you have no handicap. Currently, there's 745 on-street parking in the CBD. There are 24 on-street handicap spaces and that's only in, there's no parallel, it's only in the angled parking or in the alleys. If you change these to parallel parking, from parallel, from angled parking to parallel, you'd eliminate all but six, all but six handicap spaces in the entire 754 on-street parkings in the CBD. That's not acceptable. That's just not acceptable. Further, when the Main Street project went through, at that time, you should have been adding handicap parking. And I'll read you a letter, an email actually, that was sent by Dave Gillum, April 25th, 2019, when he was asked to review legal problems by not having on-street parallel parking. There was a circuit court case in California, Ninth Circuit Court, which he said was not binding here, but they did sue the city of Lomita and they won. You have to have on-street handicap parking. He says, however, based upon my research, it doesn't apply here, but the trend seems to recognize that federal law requires local governments to provide accessible on-street public parking in newly constructed or altered parking areas like Main Street. I'm not certain how accessible on-street public parking can be provided in parallel parking areas, but the city should at least be considering it when future road improvements are being planned. You didn't do it. At a minimum, I would recommend that the city plan to provide accessible on-street parking in the future in diagonal parking areas. That you did do, but nothing in parallel. So whatever you do, don't eliminate that. And that's all. Thank you.
Jason Van Lu in 921 North Gainesboro Avenue. Been a resident there for over 20 years, since 2001. Been a resident of Royal Oak for over 25 years. My wife and I have two children who go to Royal Oak schools, Quinn and Logan, eighth grade and 10th grade. I currently work at Ram's. Not so incidentally, we were watching Rookie of the Year in Miss Weir's class on Friday. The story screenplay was written by Sam Harper, who also wrote Cheaper by the Dozen, Just Married, a bunch of other stuff. Wherehow do you think Sam Harper got inspired to be a writer storyteller? Locally. Wherehow do you think Sam Harper got his first shot and made it big? Locally. All dreams and ideas and creations and inventions start small and locally. Jesus Christ of Nazareth started small and locally. That's one of the many reasons why we need to and should keep the independent That's one of the many reasons why we need to and should keep the independent Main Art Theater in Royal Oak and get it back to being operational. I'm not one for nostalgia nor sentimentality. The first 15 years of my life, my and my siblings' lives, were pretty terrible by any definition of the word terrible. That said, I am one for preserving truth and retelling honest to God's stories, regardless of how painful and/or pleasing they are. In my youth, when I prayed to God, God told me I would see better days as long as I could make it to 18 and get the hell out of 7645 Amboy in Durham Heights with my sanity, spirit, and faith intact. God also told me to try and help my brother and sisters make it out, and it would all get better. I didn't believe God and tried to take myself out a couple times, just a few though. And I was able to keep it to just a few times by reading books, listening to songs, and watching movies about fictional characters that experienced similar horrors and personal health than my siblings and I experienced at our home and in our lives. And if it wasn't for local independent theaters like Quovodis in Westland, the Michigan Theater in Ann Arbor, and the Main Art Theater in Royal Oak, I and others like me wouldn't have been able to find comfort and reassurances that we were not alone in our life experiences and that all negative life experiences will pass and positive life experiences might just be around the corner in days and years to come. I still got time. I'm gonna do a quote. But the film is a saddening bore, for she's lived it 10 times or more. She could spit in the eyes of fools as they ask her to focus on the words and stories of David Robert Jones, The Thin White Duke, Ziggy Stardust, David Bowie. R.I.P. Anyone ever read the book or see the movie Blessed Beasts and Children? Glendon Swarth out. Went to University of Michigan, his parents taught in Michigan State. Take care.
Good evening, my name is David Wondoff, 2906 Woodland Court, Royal Oak, Michigan 48073. I am the chairman of the Veterans Event Committee. On the part of myself and the rest of the Veterans Events Committee, we'd like to introduce all the people of Royal Oak and outlying communities and yourself, the city of Royal Oak commissioners. This year is mid-different. We're not going to be on Main Street this year due to construction. We're going to be on Washington this year, one time only. Next year, we're back. This year as well, we're going to be celebrating the brand-new Centennial Commons, which is very exciting for all of us. Also in Centennial Commons this year, we'll have 188 flags, seven feet tall, for the field of honor. The full-size flags represent each of the hometown heroes whose names appear on the memorial. This information's also on Facebook and the Rami site, things of that nature. You can also sponsor a flag if you're so interested. And all proceeds will go towards the beautification of the Centennial Park. So it's very, very exciting that we'll be there during Memorial Day at the ceremony. And especially this year, it's very important because among those remembered on the memorial is Marie Mitchell Robinson. You guys have probably never heard of her because she was on there as Rary Mitchell Robinson. And insofar as we know, she is the only woman with Royal Oak connections to be on the memorial today. And as a matter of fact, today, the 23rd of May, would have been her 98th birthday. Marie was in the WASPs, which was the Women's Air Service Pilot Program. Also with me is Therese Christman. She is going to be our speaker during the memorial ceremony, and she was Marie's sister-in-law. So she will be doing our keynote speaking at the Memorial Day event this year. Once again, I appreciate everyone's, you know, support, as you guys always have done, and look forward to another great year of the parade. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wondoff. Thank you to the events committee, and we look forward to the speech, and we're just so grateful that you'll be participating this year. A really meaningful story. Thank you.
She was a teenager.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jill Leopold. I live here in the city of Royal Oak. I'd like to read something that the young lady was not able to read for her mom. She lives here on Laurel Street. I've been a resident of Royal Oak for 61 years of my 65. During this entire time, the Main Theater has been an anchor in downtown. As Royal Oak evolves, it can embrace the old and the new, but if we allow it to dissolve into nothing but condos, bars, and restaurants, it'll lose its soul, the very thing that folks moved here for. I implore you to do everything with your power to preserve this cherished institution. And I absolutely second that from what this lady wrote. I moved here to Royal Oak 20 years ago. I came here for the uniqueness of the downtown. I've enjoyed the Sutton's Bay Theater and the Michigan Theater, and I really think it would be very disappointing if you guys decided to do away with the theater. I think it has such potential. On a side note, and I'm speaking personally, I'm not speaking for Henry Ford. This is personally just for myself. I've been working in the downtown at Henry Ford for the last several weeks. I am there as a glorified greeter when you walk in the front door. I have several old folks, sorry, old folks that come into our downtown for appointments. Many of them are lost, they can't find the building, they can't find the access point, they can't find the front door. A, there's too much construction. B, there's no signage. And C, it's the parking. They are not able to come from the north, they cannot find the access point from Third Street, they come through an alley, they can't find the alley. It's really shameful. I often, when they miss the building, they end up on the south side of town, they often have to park in the meters, they're late for their appointments, their meters are overrun, and I sit there with my hands in the air, and I don't know what else to tell them except, "Next time, you can park in our structure." Sorry about your ticket. I don't know how to help you. It's very shameful, and it's, I've been grateful to be able to work there for a month. So that's the timeframe. I spoke with Matt Murray from the Police Department about some issues in the parking structure. He's telling me that there's handicap parking available. They tried to put handicap parking next to each elevator on each side. Personally, I find there's not enough parking, handicap parking space. Also, there's only one handicap parking on each side of the elevator. So, one, A, you can't get through those doors to get to the elevator if you're in a wheelchair. The doors are too heavy, there's no automatic button or anything to go through on those doors. Personally, as an occupational therapist, you guys need a new revamp of your handicap accessible. I know Henry Ford doesn't own the building, and so, but I think the handicap situation needs more looking at in your parking structure.
Jill Greenwald, 607 Ninth Street, Royal Oak. And I am here hoping that there is a way to save the Main Art Theater in some form. I sent each of you an email, and I chose to just read that email tonight. Our city's master plan states that preservation efforts contribute to the city's historic character, also that it should benefit the entire area. The Save the Main Group has residents from many communities who have spent time in Royal Oak because of that theater. Dennis Cowan said at the planning commission that Mr. Jonah has done multiple projects in Royal Oak and feels part of the city. I'm hoping that that means concern for the citizens and the integrity of our city. Mr. Cowan said plans include keeping the marquee, but when asked if the new building could include a micro theater, his answer was possibly, but retention of the marquee does not mean the inclusion of a theater. He said the marquee has always been a wayfinding sign, that when you hit that sign, you know you're in downtown Royal Oak. It's part of the heart of our city. My son called once from Florence, Italy, and he said, "Mom, I'm sitting at steps of a building that is older than our country." Saving the marquee to advertise city functions and putting a mural on the side of a building do nothing to sustain culture and the history of our city. Jim Ellis, our former mayor and current state rep, also spoke. I respectfully but completely disagree with him. He said there's a difference between reflective nostalgia and restorative nostalgia. I have nostalgia. I miss Kresge's and Neijner's and Montgomery Ward's and all the other shops, but the shopping malls came, and now the malls are suffering because we're buying online, and I don't want to restore those stores. Life has changed. We don't want to save the Main just to practice nostalgia. Life and culture have not changed. COVID happened. Landmark having new owners and closing theaters happened. The Main Art Theater was still a living, breathing entity before COVID. In 2019, I went and saw Parasite twice and La Lighthouse, and both of them won Oscars, and one was Best Picture. All I can ask is, if there's a way to save this iconic institution, I believe it was still viable and it is historically significant.
Good evening, my name is Thales Lima. I live at 518 East 12 Mile Road. I'm a homeowner since 2015, and I decided to walk here from my home instead of drive. And I would like to say that the current configuration of Rochester Road between 12 Mile and Gardenia isn't very safe for pedestrians or cyclists. Cars go much faster than 35 miles per hour, and there is no sidewalk on the west side of the road. So I would like to express my support for the Road Diet Project approved last month. But the main reason I'm here today is to voice my opinion about the item 10 on the agenda. I'm all for density and reducing as much as possible the amount of land dedicated to surface parking lots in downtown, so in principle, I'm in favor of having a new mixed-use development there. However, I consider the Main Art Theater to be a unique part of the city, something that gives character to Royal Oak, and one of the reasons why I choose to live here. So I would appreciate if the commission considers a project that saves not only the marquee, but somehow also accommodates the existing theater. I think it's possible to combine density with interesting uses for that historic structure. So I still have some time, I would like to make some comments about the parking app as well. I would like to say that the application is really clunky. I am a computer scientist, and it was not a very straightforward way to put money on the application for me, so I guess people that have less familiarity with technology will have much more problem. So I recommend them to hire a UX designer to improve on that side. But once I loaded the app with money, it worked fine for me, but I heard a lot of people complaining, including friends of mine, complaining that they could not use the, not the application, but the tokens in pay with credit card there. So I would like to let this register as well. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Ted Strunk, and I've lived at 727 Gulf Avenue for 45 years here in Royal Oak. I'm here because I'm opposed to the new building at the corner of 11 Mile and Main. As a member of the Sustainability and Climate Action Committee, I urge you to reject this building. I've looked through the available plans and found nothing to justify this building in terms of energy efficiency, solar installations, a green roof, rainwater harvesting, or pedestrian-friendly accommodations. There's nothing in these plans that moves Royal Oak any closer to our unanimously accepted goals regarding sustainability, a lessening of greenhouse gas emissions, creating a pedestrian-friendly downtown, or decreasing our carbon footprint. Every new building proposal is an opportunity for Royal Oak to step up to the challenges of the day, to step out of the ordinary and generic, and set an example of what an aware and committed city can demand of those who would come here and create a face for Royal Oak. In April of 2020, Royal Oak was the first city in Michigan to be LEEDs certified, and the third city in the nation to be LEEDs certified. I think it's time that we expect any new building in Royal Oak to be LEEDs certified. It's time we demanded more of these folks because we know what these times demand of us. What about a solar-powered condo with a roof garden? At the last commission's meeting, a plan was adopted unanimously by this group to take action to promote sustainability, resilience, and equanimity in our city. I'm asking you to take action now by asking Mr. Jonah to step up to the demands of the day, build an example for the world, an example of what a city, a developer, can do to help save our world for our children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ed Mahl, spelled M-A-H-L. I live in Madison Heights, but I'm here because something concerns people in all of southeastern Michigan, and that is the destruction of the Main Theater. I'm not going to descend into nostalgia, since that's been ridiculed apparently, but let me just mention, looking at the internet on what was offered at the Main Theater in the last months of its existence. December 4th, The Winter's Tale, a Shakespeare play. December 10, Hanser, a play from London. December 10, Don Baskwale, which is an opera. January 16th, All My Sons, a play by Arthur Miller. January 21, Coppelia, a ballet. January 28th, Present Laughter, a play by Noah Coward. February 25, Sleeping Beauty, the greatest ballet of all, perhaps. March 3rd, Anne Frank, Parallel Stories, a play or reading. March 7th, La Boum. March 21, Cats. March 24, the, I can't even read my writing, but it was a play from London. April 7, Giselle, another famous ballet, French ballet. And May 9, Princess Minoka, a famous Japanese movie. I can't imagine why you would want to destroy an institution that allows people who live in this city to access the culture of other countries and the plays that are the greatest plays in the history of Western civilization. If you destroy the Main Theater, these portals to the past and to other countries will be destroyed, and what will you have? You'll have another condominium. Is that what you want, another condominium? To have this light that shines in southeastern Michigan silenced and darkened? Don't let that happen. If you destroy the Main Theater, there will be nothing to replace it, and this city will be, not just a city, but southeastern Michigan will be diminished. So I can't say how strongly I believe it is necessary to preserve the Main Theater in some form.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Alan Sandy. I live at 596 Rudd Gate, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan. I have lived in Michigan my entire life. I grew up in Farmington Hills, Bloomfield Hills, Birmingham, Royal Oak, and I've seen the Main Theater in any number of different ways. I am definitely a film aficionado of the highest, highest order, and you do not realize what an outstanding theater you have anchoring your downtown, a crown jewel of the Royal Oak downtown area. Why would you not do everything in your power to fully do the due diligence to see what can be done to have the Main Theater operate here? to see what can be done to have the Maine Theater operate here in 2022? Obviously, the COVID has been really unkind, not only to the movie exhibition business, but restaurants. You know, it got to a point where about the only thing I could do locally with COVID is ask people if they wanted to go to the drugstore with me to get my prescriptions. Just not the best, most fun thing. But I go back, and I have my own memories of the historic theater. Forty years ago, my mom, who was a librarian, invited me to a showing by a gentleman named Sam Ramey, who grew up in Birmingham and got his start with a movie called The Evil Dead. And I had a chance to meet him at the Maine Theater. And it was really wonderful. You know, spoiler alert, librarians do not like horror films. So when the lights came on, half the group was gone. And Sam had given them permission to leave. But the point is, imagine a world with no Maine Theater. So my mom asked me to go see it. We wouldn't be going to Royal Oak. She could ask me, let's go see the cool new condos they put up. Or let's have coffee at one of the new coffee shops. And I would have basically said, why would I go there? I can go to Bloomfield Hills or Farmington to go to a coffee shop. The last thing I'll say, and this goes to the documents. I don't know where you are in the process. But the fact is that operating the theater is not feasible. It is feasible. I can tell you it's feasible. There have always been swirling forces in the movie exhibition business, and a business case can be put together. And the last thing, condos. You do not want to put up condos without knowing that they will be let. We went to Lakeside Mall and just saw Death Valley. And the worst scenario is you put these up and it does not draw. And so I really urge you to go back to the drawing board. Thank you for listening to me.
Dear Mayor Fournier, esteemed members of the City Commission, my name is Ryan Schinkel. I'm a Novi resident, 4763, at Welsa Court. I speak here on behalf of preserving the Maine Art Theater. In her book, The Life and Death of Great American Cities, Jane Jacobs talked about how in East Harlem, people would put their television sets outside. People would gather together to watch them together. Strangers would come and go. You know, it was the eyes-on-the-street, real communal festivity. There is something in this anecdote that is illustrative about our human nature. We are social animals. We don't like to do things alone. Watching something on my phone doesn't show me 2001: Space Odyssey. I need to be around with friends, where lovers can meet, families can take their kids. The one place where you don't have to look at your phone. You can't even, you're not allowed to look at your phone in a movie theater. You can in church, you can in an illustrative community meeting, you can at a business, but you can't in a movie theater. It's the one place where the analog past still survives. In a movie theater, it's like Plato's cave. Everyone has one way of seeing and one way of hearing. Your individuality isn't surrendered, and the illusion is never thought to be real. But what an illusion, what a sight. Characters take on a mythic quality in a movie theater. It's not something you can replicate in a home system. We, when watching a movie, take our own daily experiences. Andy Dufresne climbing through the muck in Shawshank. We don't need to smell the sewer to feel the sensation. And we then take that experience in the movie theater and draw from it. So when you're trying to stream things online in your own home, you're trying to replicate the same sensation. The movie theater is a mold for our ability to culturally appreciate the finer things and refine our own souls in the best way possible. I would just like to say also about, this is just in some, it's collective evasence. But this is not just a cultural proposition. It is a business proposition. Right now, you could be making money in the Maine Art Theater. You could be doing all this. There is a movie that is 14th in the U.S. Domestic Box Office this year called Everything Everywhere All at Once. It's an Asian-American family drama that's also cosmic, multiverse stuff. It's really good. It's made over $50 million through this past weekend, an 824 indie film. When Dr. Strange came in, they stopped playing it at the big theaters on their big screens. But it would still be playing right now. Not in Imagine on the giant screens, but it would be playing at the Maine Art on the giant screens. Right now, this place could still be making money. Movie industries are coming back. They're going to be returning to pre-pandemic profits, probably by about 2023. Right now, they're having a modest income of quarter one this year, more, 17% more than the previous quarter in 2021. Movie theaters are back. Indie films are the way to go. This is where the industry is headed. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Carol Hennessy, Royal Oak. I just would like to announce that the Royal Oak Memorial Society will be sponsoring, placing flags on the veterans' graves this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at Oakview Cemetery. If you go inside the cemetery, just past the pond, we'll be meeting there, and all the flags will be there for you. We have over 2,000 flags to plant, so we need as much help as we can get. In the last two weekends in May, we've been cleaning veterans' graves, and we had about 50 people total for the two weeks. So we got a lot done. So I would like to thank them. On a sad note, I am very disappointed with the Commission. You do what you want to do and don't care about the citizens and what they want. This city used to be a great place to live. But with all that is going on and what you're doing to the businesses that are closing and that more will follow if things aren't settled with this parking problem, the problem with the changing Rochester Road and the Maine Theater. It's unnecessary. You're spending a lot of money, especially on Rochester Road, for nothing. It doesn't need to be changed. We need two lanes on each side. If you drive anywhere north of 12 Mile on Crooks, Campbell, Main, or Rochester, you know we need the space. I only hope that the citizens remember all this that you're doing at the next election because it's not acceptable.
Hello. Rick Kowalski, 419 Virginia. I guess we now know how you're going to try and solve your structural deficit, and that's by increasing the millages, either by resetting renewals or adding new ones like the Parks and Rec Village. I think if you look at the resets and the proposed new one, we're going to be at least around another mill, maybe over that. Just to let everybody in the city know, the city is not getting less revenue every year because of Headley and Capet. We are going up by at least the rate of inflation. And in fact, it's going to get up, it's going to be over 3% this year and probably over 5%, the 5% cap next year because of the inflation rate. So revenue is not the problem. Management is the problem. So we don't need another additional millage under the guise of Parks and Rec or anything else. In regards to one of the renewals, that would be the Road Millage. I have still got the original project scope for that millage. And there's two streets that I live by, and I'm still waiting for them to be repaved. And they were supposed to have been repaved two years ago. So I'm hoping that we at least have a scope of work for the renewal, other than we're going to fix stuff. Okay, what you're going to fix? When you're going to fix it? And who's going to be held accountable when stuff doesn't work? Or doesn't get done? In regards to the Maine Theater thing, I understand that the guy's got his own, it's a private, he owns his own property. That is true. If he wants to tear it down, he perfectly legally can do that, no problem. However, this city does not have to provide a PUD approval to basically, to provide leeway to our zoning requirements for his project. You have that option. You don't have to buy into this. He can tear it down. We sure as hell don't have to get rid of setbacks and other parking requirements and other things for his PUD. Okay? And another thing with regards to affordable housing, where is that in this plan? How much are these things going to cost? Is somebody who works as a barista in their downtown going to be able to afford one of these condos? Because I keep hearing from this group about affordable housing. Well, here's your chance to step up and make it happen. Finally, the Imagine Theater. They're planning on apparently coming before this Commission to add gambling-type situation to their bar. It's not so much the proposal. It's the fact that it's already been spent out through social media, cranes, and a few other places, that this is what he's planning on doing before they even come here. Which gives the idea that, gee, how much stuff has been greased behind the scenes before we even get to find out what's going on over this, how this was even approved of? I mean, for crying out loud, the guy goes ahead and announces it on cranes before it even comes before the Commission. That's ridiculous.
Good evening. Jim Capizzo, Madison Heights. There's members on my city council envious of the walkability downtown that Royal Oak has. Another high-rise is not going to add to that walkability. I've lived in the Boston area, the Washington, D.C. area, the Pittsburgh area, and the Minneapolis area. I've attended independent films for many years. And none of them have a large, three large auditoriums with comfortable seating. They're often smaller and one single screen. So we're blessed with the Maple Theater as well. I hope to get future funding from the Michigan Arts at the Redford Theater, the wonderful Redford. There's a whole plaque of donors that they got to contribute to that. And finally, I think the virus will be gone one day, and attendance will be up again. Thank you.
Oops, my technology locked me out. One sec. Good evening. Should have prepared a speech, maybe a teleprompter. But what got my attention was a hope for resolution with the parking situation downtown. I no longer go to Ferndale because of systems like this that are difficult to use. I can't pay with coins. Now it's come to my town that I've called home for three years. I'm fine with backing in, but I'm very comfortable driving and testing cars. I came from the auto industry. I still like cars. I like the lack of front plate on my car, so it looks cool for photos. I wish we could still use coins. I'm not too keen on cameras replacing police. Do we want to be part of the U.K.? I really don't want to be required to use an app. I had a recent smartphone catastrophe. I've had multiple computer failures over the years. I used to fix them, work in IT. My phone has been subject to security vulnerabilities for years. My security updates on my eight-core server in my pocket are two years behind with no ETA. No one is coming. It's on developers for that model. I'm not a senior citizen, but I am a senior software developer. And if the average person understood the hundreds of thousands of parts behind an app tomorrow that coins are placed for something so simple, I think they'd freak. And that's before throwing security at it. I'm concerned how much we, as individuals, organizations, ultimately our nation, depend on technology and really our choice to use it. I really like the coin credit card combo we had before. I feel like that's a good compromise. You could use coins or plastic money. Maybe we should be concerned with how much we inflate the U.S. dollar so that the coins aren't worth as much. But I realize now there's no time for questions. Maybe there's a place I could ask questions, just how city government functions. It's kind of interesting to be here. I do have an action item. I liked various questions asked of MPS. But I specifically like the low-cost, paste a sign on the meter tomorrow just to at least get the information out to the people who use the system right away. Doesn't depend on TV, social media. I've been using the garages. So yeah, thanks for your time. I hope you hear my concerns or suggestions, comments. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jane Strunk. I live at 727 Gulf Avenue here in Royal Oak. Friends of the Maine Art formed 11 months ago, immediately following the closure of the theater. We currently have over 2,200 Facebook supporters, 450 Instagram followers, 355 individuals on our email distribution list. Less than a month ago, Friends of Maine Art launched a change.org petition drive to preserve the Maine Art Theater and independent film in Royal Oak. As of this afternoon, we have 3,558 signatures, close to 20% from current Royal Oak residents, signatures from 57 cities throughout Michigan, all over Michigan, including Detour Village in the Upper Peninsula, 21 states from all over the country, and 15 countries, including Argentina, Sweden, Ukraine, and Australia. So the impact of the Maine Art Theater goes far and wide and it's lifelong for many individuals. We are strong in numbers and in our commitment to preserve art cinema in Royal Oak. And our voice matters. As a longtime resident who has witnessed the city being transformed and as Community Outreach Coordinator for Friends of Maine Art, I've had countless, countless, so many conversations with members of this community. And then, I mean, in the downtown area and mornings at Farmer's Market, talking to various people who want to have conversations. I have gained a perspective. I'm a good listener. And there have been themes. The confluence of location of the proposed development, the pandemic, art-film culture, the city of Royal Oak's commitment to addressing sustainability and climate action, and the tension that seems to exist between private ownership and community needs. That has brought us, the city of Royal Oak, to a consequential juncture. That is my observation. Those are, as I reflect on all of these years I've lived in the city and my experiences at the market and around town, this is what it feels like to me. And to me, it means we must do something different. This is not business as usual. So I'm asking you, as our commissioners, to consider pausing this process, take stock, bring together stakeholders, and seek a solution that keeps Royal Oak culture and character vibrant. Thank you so much. And I have something. If I could just give to the city clerk?
Yeah, the city clerk, and she'll sit down. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners and staff. My name is Rodney Catan. I live at 507 South Laurel for the last 30 years. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed development at 118 North Main Street. I'm going to try this out, my glasses, which probably will be a problem. I just want to say, these are not part of my written remarks, but the Commissioner's invocation tonight, I thought, was very eloquent and heartfelt. And I heard him loud and clear. And I hope you hear my remarks as encouragement and not as disrespectful in any way. I think there are two high-level issues to consider for the proposed development. First, the proposed demolition of the beloved and unique Maine Art Theater, but also the proposed construction of yet another, what I would call a dime-a-dozen, mixed-use building. First, with respect to the theater, the President of the Friends of Maine Art has repeatedly and respectfully requested your assistance in facilitating conversations with the developer to find a community-based solution. As far as I know, he's done it at least twice that I've seen here. But I don't think any of you have actually taken him up on that. And I find that discouraging. And if I'm not right on that, I'll retract it. Everyone understands that the property owner has the right to tear down the building. But if you use that as a conversation ender, I think that's a cop-out. It's disappointing, really, that our leaders don't prioritize culture and arts. It's disappointing that none of you, at least up until now, have been willing to step forward to make a difference on this issue, particularly when so many citizens have told you how important it is to them. it is to them. But I think there's good news here really, because there's still time for you to use your platform to make a difference on this issue. So I'm requesting that you, that you make a good faith effort to facilitate an equitable Separately from the theater, the other issue is the construction proposal. As someone said earlier, the PUD offers you the opportunity to use your leverage, to use the tools in the PUD to create a project that's more beneficial to the community. And I encourage you to use your discretion to, to do that. You can start with the setbacks, which I believe are too small. And finally, as someone also said, the sustainability plan approved last week is a really good tool that you could use. And since you so sincerely approved it, I would encourage you to actually use it and apply it to this project. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Maher. I'm a past Royal Oak resident currently residing in Troy. I'm also a Friends of the Main Art Board member. Later tonight, you will be asked to approve a planned development for the current site of the Main Art. As you look at that proposal, I would ask that you consider the following information in regards to the economic and cultural life of downtown. A recent study found that movie theater patrons spend an equal amount of on-movie tickets as they do in surrounding businesses on movie night. That number is even higher for arthouse movie theaters due to the more affluent demographic. Given this information, our group estimates that an arthouse theater in Royal Oak will bring an annual economic impact of $1.4 to $1.8 million, while attracting nearly 40,000 patrons to downtown. Some people have questioned why we need a second movie theater in downtown, but the emphasis for our nonprofit model is to be community-based. Programming and events geared towards the community as a whole, including educational partnerships, partnerships with OCC, Oakland University and the Royal Oak School District. In a for-profit movie theater model, the goal is to keep as much money within the four walls as possible, adding bowling alleys, sportsbook gambling rooms and full-service restaurants alongside movie theaters, lessening the impact on the surrounding businesses. In cities as disparate as Cambridge, Massachusetts, Asheville, North Carolina and Portland, Oregon, for-profit and not-for-profit movie theaters coexist in close proximity. Our plan is not unique. It is necessary for a vibrant city. While our primary goal is to save the Main Art Theater as it stands today, should you approve the proposal from North Main Square Developers, the Friends of the Main Art asks that you consider strongly recommending that for the good of downtown Royal Oak, they make every effort to work with our group to include an arthouse theater within the new development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. City Commissioners, my name is Jason Kriziac. I live at 55 Wellesley in Pleasant Ridge. I did want to say that we did appreciate meeting with City Manager Paul Brock and Todd Fenton, Deputy City Manager. We met with them last Thursday. We discussed the project as it relates to the wishes of the Friends of the Main Art Theater. So I appreciate the time that was given to us. I feel it was very constructive. We'd like to build on that and create a stakeholder meeting with the property owner, the city, elected officials and representatives from the Friends of the Main Art, because we really believe that there's a win-win solution at this location that could really be a shining example for the community. Mr. Jonah and Dennis Cowan have met with us twice. I feel it was very, you know, cordial meeting. We're also planning on meeting again and to discuss the future regardless of what happens tonight. Regarding what happens tonight, because we haven't had a stakeholder meeting where we got the commissioners, the property owners, the representatives of Friends of the Main Art together into a room to really talk about what that solution would look like, which we all feel is very tangible and very close to becoming a reality, I would ask that tonight you have clear debate on the future of this site. You listen to the property owner and you consider the future of this very important location, both for the city of Royal Oak and the region as a whole. So I would ask that after considering tonight's Agenda Item 10, that you either table the vote or postpone the vote until we can get a meeting together with the property owner, representatives from the city, leadership, you're all leaders in this community. This is an issue where the community is looking to you to lead. I feel it would be very productive if we could have a meeting with three parties that are dedicated to finding a win-win situation at this location, because I know you've all thought about this. I know you have. I trust your leadership. I've been in those situations. I know it's not easy, but I can assure you that we are committed to finding a solution here that everyone in this room can be proud of. And 100 years from now, we can look back with pride, all of us in this room, and say we did that. So I thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Tom Ridgeway and I'm a lifelong resident of North Rosedale Park Neighborhood in Northwest Detroit. While I'm not a Royal Oak resident, I have lots of friends and families who have lived here or continue to live here. Royal Oak is a great community, diverse, inclusive and more importantly, walkable. My wife and I have gone to literally hundreds of movies at the main. With every visit, our plans always include walking the Main Street corridor, shopping or dining, or stopping in for a quick drink or coffee at one of the dozens of fine establishments that surround your community. I realize that movie revenue is down sizable amounts and the Friends of the Main don't have a finalized plan to make this theater survive, but once this theater is demolished, it's gone forever. I look at the success of the Farmington Civic in the heart of Farmington or the Redford Theater, which is about a half mile from my house in Northwest Detroit. It draws people from the entire region. There are dozens of other examples around the country where cities have used public funds to prop up iconic institutions such as the main. Aren't there any federal, state or local dollars that could help? Couldn't we at least study the viability of saving this gem? Over the past 50-plus years of my life, I've seen the short-sighted approach to development that Detroit has allowed. Developers promise a world, historic buildings get demolished, but the final results never quite measure up to the glitzy proposals. Can you really put a price tag on a destination location like the Main Art Theater? I sure see lots of vacancy signs as the new condos that have been built in Royal Oak, but there's only one historic movie theater. Please don't let this iconic structure get demolished. Developing a viable business plan won't be easy for the Friends of the Main, but the passion and the commitment to help this theater survive is monumental. What is the rush for demolition? As I stated earlier, the Main Art Theater is a destination location which draws patrons from the entire Metro Detroit region. They spend lots of money in this city. Isn't that what the Royal Oak Chamber of Commerce wants? People don't come and visit Royal Oak because they have great condos. They visit Royal Oak because they love the walkable, walkable community that offers shopping, dining and a theater experience that attracts people from every generation and culture. Don't risk destroying this unique small-town charm that Royal Oak enjoys to build another condo. Most cities would kill for the charm of your Main Street and the Main Art Theater is a big part of that charm. Please deny or at least delay the demolition plans of the Main Art Theater. It's a precious cultural entity and it must be preserved. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Patsy Regio, 1403 Smith Avenue. Okay, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal and they are endowed by their Creator with certain and unelaborate rights, that among these are life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. The pursuit of happiness is what all these people are coming here for, to save the main. I have tipped her all my life. Mr. Cowan, you were so lucky to be our mayor. You've heard these people and I know you say sometimes, Mr. Mayor, oh, it's emotional. It's emotional, but it's emotional with fact. It's not without fact. And we have so many talented, knowledgeable people that come up and talk to all of you. You could have your children going to school here. They could use that theater. They could write plays. They could have talent shows. All of, and I learned so much. That one man talked about all the wonderful movies. I went Sunday for the first time, stood outside the main where Mr. Jason, well, his first name is Jason, he's amazing. I hope that you work with him. So we had about 30 people out there, cars went by and they honked. Forty, 50 cars. One car, somebody yelled something negative out of 40 or 50 cars. This isn't just emotional, it's factual. It's a beautiful theater and I think the sustainability and the infrastructure will be affected by the building that they propose. The city was so vibrant. When I went to school here in grade school, we had to close, we had to go to another school, we had to go to school half-day in high school. We had so many children here. You are responsible for the safety and the health, which is a marijuana thing, you know I'm all against. And Mr. Drake, I know you're a great man, but slow down. I heard something on the, for the general fund, there was something listed that something, some money is being affected, that it's not going to cover taking care of all of our parks. Why don't we hire people in the city instead of a contractor to sustain our park also? So it's just, these people are wonderful and I've learned so much from listening to them today. Please remember what you're here for. I'll read this one other part. Okay, so the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the government, that, from the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive or these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new, and to institute, excuse me, and to institute new government, laying its foundation in such principles and organizing safety and happiness. Safety and happiness comes first. Thanks. Have a good Memorial Day.
Evening. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford. Let's get back to parking. I hope you were listening to Lori London and her impassionate plea regarding the retailers downtown. You know, these people, it's, you're messing around with their livelihood here. And as far as I'm concerned, the parking system sucks and the contract sucks. I would hope that you take, it's unfortunate that they didn't stay long enough to hear. You're going to miss the good stuff. I hope you take them up on the opportunity to have somebody down here from MPS to walk the system and stay at least a week, talking to people that are having trouble working the system or whatever. And by all means, have that person with his clothing properly identified as to what he is and who he is, so people will seek him out and, and talk to him. Please do not implement this system in the, the surface parking until you get it straightened out in the, in the street parking. I mean, the old adage, you know, doing the same thing over and over again is insanity. Well, that's, that would be insanity. And I'll tell you, what I'm hearing tonight about having in-and-out cameras instead of individual cameras, both at the Sixth Street Lot and on Seventh Street, that's a one-way street, I will be pissed if I go down Seventh Street and get a ticket because I was using it just to get through, not even intending to park. Now, I don't park on the, on the street. I don't like it. I prefer to park in the deck where I can get two hours free and I can park as long as I want. This system should not be any more complicated than getting in and out of the parking deck. And I agree with Commissioner Colo on the idea of why should you have to prepay? With the parking deck, you go in and you pay on the way out. You know, it's, it just boggles the mind. I commented about the, the contract. You know, MPS has the right to terminate upon the city's failure to cure. Now, I've mentioned before, you should be able to terminate this contract with them because they failed to cure. Oh, no, that's not what the, what the contract says. The only way you can get out of it is if the system fails to make $100, $150 per space per month based on the 2018, 16 or 18, I can't recall what it is, usage. You know, again, those bongs are, you get my message, those bongs are wrong.
Phyllis Selter, North Lafayette. We've heard today and many other meetings how people here feel about the theater and we hope you're listening. I mean, we are the residents here. But I noticed on, maybe a couple of weeks ago, it was pointed out that we have enough entertainment, you know, we have the other two theaters. Well, as if there's any relationship between these theaters and the Main Art Theater. I mean, they're live. Most of them, I think, are for generally younger people and that's fine. And then we have the Baldwin, which is a live theater. Tickets start, I believe, at $30 and can go up quite high. You go to the main theater and last time it was, I believe, $7, could be up to 10 even. So we have different people going to different things. You can't say that those live theaters can take the place of this theater. There's just no way. So this is only one of the growing issues settled by the lack of democratic process. There are many questions to be answered. As all issues have pros and cons, total agreement is rare in a democracy. Being consistently in lockstep for issues that may have permanent adverse effects have consequences for our residents. So we hope you take this into consideration. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kerry Satar. I have a former Royal Oak resident. I'm currently at 30250 West 12 Mile Road in Farmington Hills. I'm a current board member and I guess I'm just asking you to implore really the take to heart some of the information that you've heard from the residents and community people that have spoke here today and also the people, there is a lot more people that are here for the city planning commission. I think there is some letters sent. I just ask you to really take a look at that. Over the last years, I'm starting to not really understand Royal Oak and its identity and I think losing, it's losing its identity if you don't somehow keep a theater part of this city, if it just completely goes away. I think we're here at a crossroads right now and I believe this decision will determine, I've heard it from other people that spoke here today, it will determine what Royal Oak looks like in the future. If you think 10, 20, 30 years from now, when you bring back your family and loved ones to come down to Royal Oak, you want to bring them somewhere, you don't want to point to a condo and say, you know, and be part of that. You want to, you want to actually bring somebody to something and you're taking away one of those additional spots. One of the, one of the things that really make the difference between a good city and a great city, it's always comes back to green spaces and cultural institutions. If you look at any city that it's around and they have the condos, they have the restaurants, they have the bars, the ones that have the cultural institutions and those green spaces and the bike paths that allow people to ride in the streets, those are the ones that people are, the cities are actually starting to implement now because those are really important to the residents. So I just ask you to take to heart some of the things that were said and save the main art. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Ridgway. I live in Northwest Detroit. A little bit nervous, but I would kick myself if I didn't get up here tonight and tell you what I've written down here. I wish to express my strong support for saving the Main Art Theater. It's a true cultural gem in the crown and heart of Royal Oak and its surrounding communities. It should be treasured and preserved, not demolished. To allow the demolition of this theater would be extremely short-sighted, just like the iconic Hudson's Department Store in downtown Detroit that was imploded in a massive plume of dust and smoke in 1998. Once it's gone, it's gone forever. So many visionary citizens knew- ninety-eight. Once it's gone, it's gone forever. So many visionary citizens knew that Hudson's and other important buildings like it should be preserved, but instead their voices were ignored. And the amazing building that was Hudson's is now only a memory. Decades later, it's widely recognized that it was a mistake on leadership's part to not preserve such an important structure and figure out a way to utilize it in a manner that would benefit the city and community. If allowed to be destroyed, the history books will tell the same story about the Main Art Theater, which brings so much character, culture, and charm to the heart of downtown Royal Oak. The question inevitably we will be asked, why and how did civic leaders allow its demise despite the countless voices calling for it to be saved? Why didn't leaders instead look towards successful historic theater renovation models in nearby cities? Why were best practices not implemented? But by then it will be too late and yet another ubiquitous condo will have been thrown up to join the seemingly never-ending condo mania taking place. The Main is a destination landmark showcasing culturally, artistically rich independent films, which attract moviegoers from all over Metro Detroit, both near and far. While in town for a show, moviegoers not only come to see films, but also step out and patronize surrounding commercial retailers. Many cities have deemed their small independent theaters historically and culturally important. They've decided their cultural worth is significant enough to warrant the necessary effort and funds to preserve them and make them viable. Because of a forward visionary mindset, their towns are richer and more unique for the preservation of these venues. I'm asking that you please have the vision to look beyond the immediate monetary reward gleaned from the construction of yet another condominium that will in time inevitably become passe and instead examine the amazing potential and lasting impact that the Main Art Theater brings to Royal Oak, which has been its home for eighty years. Culture should be valued over profit. For the greater good of both present and future generations, the Main should remain. Thank you for listening.
All right. Do we have anybody else left? Going once, going twice. Okay, we're going to close public comment and bring the discussion back to this side of the table. Didn't you go, Ms. Weg?
I did, but your rule number four says I can go again.
No. No, everyone gets to speak once and that's, that's what we do unless there's a vote of the commission.
Rule number four, an individual will not be given an opportunity to speak a second time on the same issue until all others wishing to make a presentation on the subject have had an opportunity to do so.
It's discretionary.
Doesn't say discretionary.
Okay. Well, it's discretionary, so we're only going to do one comment per person. Thank you, Ms. Weg. Unless the, unless anyone wants to make a motion. Does anyone want to make a motion to extend public comment? Mr. Collo?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the rules for one public comment moving forward per person.
Motion by Commissioner Collo. Is there a second?
Wait, move forward for all time?
It's a practice we've maintained, so move forward for all time, yeah.
To just, that's what our, our rules and policy are anyways.
Yeah.
I think it's written.
Am I misunderstanding? Say it again.
It'll be brief.
I'd like to make, get, which Memorial is that?
I think it's already.
I was trying to make a motion to establish rule thirty established.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I think we need, is there any support?
It's okay.
Okay. Motion fails without support.
Then you need to address this on your rules committee.
Ma'am, it's been addressed. We, we have, if you read our Roberts Rules of Order and you read the city rules.
Yes, I'll not say that.
Okay. Fair, fair feedback. It's discretion. We do one per, per person unless the commission votes to allow for.
Your script too.
Yeah, it's in the script too. All right. Okay. So, I do appreciate everyone coming out to public comment tonight. It's ten eleven PM. We're going to get to city business soon here. I'll have some comments for folks when we get to item ten. We're not doing item nine, so we're not going to discuss the road miller. So, we'll get through the consent agenda. And I want to get right into item ten, which is the planning commission recommendation for the amendment to final plan unit development for the, the North Main Street. So, if you stick around, we'll get to there very quickly. So, we have the consent agenda in front of us. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Yes, Commissioner Collo?
K and L.
K and L. Anybody else? Okay. That leaves a consent agenda consisting of city commission meeting minutes from the ninth, approval of appointments, committee rotation, claims from May seventeenth to May twentieth, approval of purchase orders, approval of Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority renewal, and general liability insurance coverage, proclamation designated June as Skrider Awareness Month, approval of First Amendment agreement and consent to assignment business, a personal property outsourcing services contract, approval of the extension of workers' compensation management services shed with claims, authorization for revised funding agreements, Stevenson Highway water main improvements, and a word of the contract fire station one rooftop, heating, air conditioning, and ventilation improvements. Sir, a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second on the consent, second, second by Commissioner Dubach. Discussion on the consent agenda. All right. With none, a call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Alrighty, that gets us to K and L. Mr. Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see Mr. Fadelli here. So, starting off with K here. This is a, a renewal of a contract that expired last year. If the commission will recall, we actually paid this vendor seventy-five hundred dollars at the end of last year. And it looks like this renewal is at the same rate that it's been since its inception, which I believe is Jim Ellison signed it was, was twenty sixteen. So, I guess I was just having questions about how the contract came about, who else in the space does this, and is there a better deal for us to be out there, to be had?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners. I'd be hesitant to say that there's a better deal out there. There's not a lot of people that run a concession, particularly in this day and age. And that would be willing to spend the fifteen thousand dollars to rent the space at Memorial Park during the Woodward Dream Cruise. They've been a pretty significant partner with us for, over the years. And I have ensured them that if we were to move forward with this extension of the contract, that there would be no reduction in their lease payment. So, they would be required to pay the full fifteen thousand dollars regardless of the previous outcome. We were coming out of the pandemic and having the Dream Cruise. The year after the pandemic, we were struggling to find other food concession vendors to help with their concession sales. So, it's a significant contract, fifteen thousand dollars for the concession of the Woodward Dream Cruise, that would go into the city's Woodward Dream Cruise revenue account.
So, I guess I'm just thinking that at the very least, it should be adjusted for inflation since twenty sixteen. That we should probably look for additional funds. I mean, it costs us more each year to host the Dream Cruise, the park cleanup, the, the cost of police and fire and EMS personnel. And then to recruit some of the funds that they got last year when we issued a pretty significant refund to them. So, I, you know, personally, I would like to see this dollar amount, one, recover our seventy-five hundred dollars, and then two, have some multipliers in it. So, I don't know if this needs to go to RFP to see if there's someone else to come in to do this, or if they'd be willing to renegotiate that. But that's kind of where I stand on this contract right now.
Mr. Fadelli, is this, how long is the renewal for?
Until two thousand twenty-five.
Yep, till two thousand twenty-five. Yeah. So, my issue is, is that, you know, you know, this particular vendor was having financial troubles and all of that. And we, you know, I voted against it, but, you know, there was some support offered to this vendor. You know, I think that we don't go beyond a year because to me it seems like a little iffy right now what the situation is. Are they going to come back next year looking for more? And do we take that opportunity to get a, it's been a while since we did an RFP on this, so I think it's probably time, given the fact that the vendor came and asked for concession, excuse the pun. And since that happened, I think it's appropriate we go out for an RFP because it shows, it's a signal to me of instability. So, therefore, that's where I stand on it. Not more than a year. Anybody else? Anyone want to make a motion?
You may have to help me.
Anybody else? Commissioner Dubach?
So, per your recommendation, Mayor, I would approve staff's recommendation of contract with a limit of one year.
Motion by Commissioner Dubach, second by Commissioner Collo. Discussion. All right. With none, a call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Motion passes. L, Mr. Collo?
I guess I just have a lot of the same questions around this one too. Can you explain just a little who, how this part of the contract works, who Michigan Hot Rod Association is, and how this funding stream works for the city?
So, the car show, there's a fifty-dollar registration fee for each car that parks their car in the Woodward Dream Cruise Memorial Park Car Show, which the event itself utilizes a lot of our staff time and resources. So, in the past, we've used a, what I call an event planner that helps city staff essentially park the eight hundred cars at Memorial Park and the multiple vendors, commercial vendors, whether it be the concession, there's a lot of retail vendors as well. They park them strategically in the park to get as much utilization of this space. And so, and previously, this, from my understanding, was a more of a handshake, handshake agreement between the current staff member that oversaw the car show at Memorial Park. That group has since retired. And they've recommended the Michigan Hot Rod Association. They've done work with them in the past at the Autorama. So, they're very familiar with the setup and very familiar with, you know, car shows in itself. So, I'm bringing forward this contract to sort of have an actual contract in place rather than more of like a handshake agreement. So, of the fifty-dollar car registration fee, they would get ten dollars per car. And then they'd get fifteen percent off of commercial vendor rental rates that usually they arrange anywhere between a couple thousand dollars.
Okay. And then has the city attorney reviewed, Mr. Leal, have you reviewed this contract at all?
Yes. Excuse me. Yes, I have.
Okay. Okay. So, I think this is less than a fifteen thousand dollar contract, right?
Pardon?
Doing some quick math, I think this is about less than a fifteen thousand dollar contract if there's eight hundred cars, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Any other questions on it? Any motions?
And move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Collo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. All right. With none, a call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right. That brings us to, item nine was moved to June thirteenth. So, that brings us to item ten, which is what most of the public comment was here for. And sincerely, we do appreciate everybody that's emailed us, everybody that came out to speak tonight. You know, much of what was said isn't wrong. You know, it's right. It is coming from a place of importance and from, you know, emotional ties to the theater, you know, the importance it had historically before its closure to the community. All of these things are right. Nobody is wrong. You know, in fact, I can say that, you know, early on when we first understood that landmark had moved out of the theater, the city commission, well, I can, I can speak at least for, for some of us up here, looked into seeing, you know, could somebody else operate it? What was the situation? You know, how do we get somebody else in there? Commissioner Dubach and I raised up the flagpole, maybe even before that. How do we historically designate the theater? But that was met with, you know, a pretty quick, you know, legal response that said, you know, it's private property. The city doesn't have standing. That would be a challenge. I reached out to Michael Moore. I know the work that he did in Traverse City to see what his thoughts were on being able to help support the theater and see what we could do to take over the landmark. Did not get a, a positive response. So, you know, I think you have a lot of folks up here that are listening and understanding and hear and share a lot of the same sentiments and feelings that you passionately bring to public comment, to your activities, to your rallies. There's a couple of things though that are, that are pretty, you know, challenging for the city commission from a statutory point of view. One, we, we don't have standing. So, that, you know, we can't go and tell the property owner what to do. That's one thing we can't do. I know there's been some remarks about, you know, stop the demolition, propose demolition. We're not, we don't have any statutory ability to do that at this moment. I think everybody under, understands that, right? If the property owner wants to pull a demo permit, they could demo. We can't, we can't stand in the way. That's just, would be a violation of our, our dereliction of our duties and open us up to great civil liability and we would lose. So, there are, I think, some things in public comment coming from a lot of passion that, you know, and ideas that are really good. And then some, you know, we wish we had, I guess, more statutory authority, but, but we don't. And we don't have standing. So, a lot of what we do here, and I tried to explain this at the planning commission, is we have to look at things for what is technically in front of us. The demolition of the building isn't technically in front of us. That's something we're not able to stop. But there are other things that, you know, we've tried and continue to look at. So, I will say before we jump into this, a lot of talk about condos. We have a lot of folks that live in condos in Royal Oak. In fact, my parents live in a condo. Condos are important. Most people that own condos are over sixty years old. We have an aging population. So, I just, you know, want to challenge folks that, you know, I understand the, the point folks are trying to make, but, you know, there's, there's also, we have to be cognizant of other citizens actually live and own condos in the city of Royal Oak. So, you know, they're not all bad, especially for an aging population. But I'm curious to see how the discussion goes tonight, what staff has to say, what the petitioner has to say. But I don't want folks to think that, you know, the city commission doesn't hear you and understand you and share a lot of your same feelings. It's just we have statutory responsibilities that we have to be very hyper aware of and very cognizant of. So, we have to look at that being our base lens. So, some of the discussion you hear tonight might get complicated and technical, but that's because we have to uphold our responsibilities and, and, and work in that regard. With that, I see Mr. Hedges is here. Are you going to kick us off?
I can.
Okay.
What is before you this evening is a recommendation from the planning commission on an amendment to a final planning and development site plan.
And development agreement. The planning commission has reviewed the plan for a new five-story mixed-use building at the northeast corner of Main and Eleven Mile and have recommended its approval. The subject property was rezoned to planned unit development some eighteen years ago. And the project has, the development agreement for that project has been amended on numerous occasions. So, what is before you is actually an amendment to the development agreement. The planning commission did review the plan at their February twenty-eighth meeting and did recommend, excuse me, not February twenty-eighth, but their February eighth meeting and recommended its approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the actual language of the development agreement amendment that's before you. For specific questions on the plan, I'll defer to the developer and their representative who are here this evening who could probably answer those questions better than I.
Questions on the agenda from Commissioner Hedges?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just want to start, Mr. Hedges, kind of point that the mayor made previously. If the applicant asked for a demolition permit today, during the day, they could have received one, right? There's nothing that, there's not a vote by the city commission to approve a demolition permit, correct?
As far as I know, the planning division usually doesn't review demolition permits. They typically go through the building division. Unless there's some outstanding issue with the property that we're unaware of, I don't know that the DA would have a reason to deny such permit.
Okay. So, then, and I, we can ask the developer for sure about some of those property-specific questions. But I know a lot of people in this room were at the planning commission meeting. Can you talk about the changes that were recommended at the planning commission and that have been incorporated into this new plan? that have been incorporated into this new plan?
I think, give me just a moment to see the language of the Planning Commission's One issue that they discussed was resolution of the issues related to the wall openings on the north front facade. The petitioner has made some steps towards correcting that, it's not fully corrected, but can be easily done administratively, there's no further additions to either the plan or the development agreement amendment language that we need. Planning Commission did ask for bicycle parking to be added to development, we did note that that is depicted on the plan sheets, and the developer could probably elaborate on that. They had also asked for material to be added along the openings along 11 Mile Road to screen the parking area. Again, we see that those were added to the facade elevations on the ground level that face 11 Mile Road. Planning Commission also gave the petitioner the option on the third floor to have it either be developed as, with residential units as is presented, or as a general office space. And the last revision they were asking for is to require the petitioner to make their best efforts to incorporate space for arts, culture, and/or theater uses. Again, I'd have to defer to that, to the petitioner and their representative, these are not no specific citations on the plan sheets that deal directly with that.
Okay, I just wanted to point out, you know, get, let people know that there have been changes to this plan since it was originally presented, to update the role of the Planning Commission, so that's all I have right now.
Anybody else, questions for Mr. Hedges? Commissioner Dubb?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm saying that the recommendation from the Planning Commission comes on a split vote?
The vote was four to two, they were short one member that evening.
Okay. Do you recall any of the objections of the dissenting members?
I don't specifically, I don't believe I was at that meeting, I can't recall specifically their specific objections.
Mayor, you're right.
They would be available, though, in the videos of the meeting that are available on the Planning Commission's. I'd heard a letter to you with the link to the videos, but specifically what those were, I don't recall.
Okay. Was that the one you missed? Sure was it? Or were you there? Not that I believe I was there. If I wasn't there, I watched it. So, now I'm getting my universes mixed up. When I was sick, I couldn't make it.
I think you were there.
It was the highlights of the debate.
Was I there? Okay.
Mayor, I did, just looking at them, I know I may have misspoke when I said this was reviewed by the Planning Commission on February 8th, it was a third April 12th meeting.
Yeah. Was there April 12th? So, then I guess I watched it, I was not there. I was a guy absent.
No.
You were absent. I was absent on 12th. Commissioner Douglas was there, and you were absent. That's right. My understanding is that... All the worlds blend, digital, in-person, I mean, when you do your homework, you watch, the worlds get mixed up, so.
My understanding is there's a couple of members who expressed, you know, concerns about walkability, things like that, which I thought was odd, because multifamily, dense housing with mixed-use first-floor retail office is a standard walkability tool. So, I was, I was a little confused, I was hoping someone could shed some, some light on that being a walkability concern versus right now what is very much majority-service parking lot that folks walk by on the street. And then also the conversation around the setback, my understanding is Commissioner Douglas, if she were here, I'm sure would, would line us that bringing buildings to the curb is very much a walkable, walkability strategy, and she's actually fought for it in other areas of the city, and we debated that up here, where that's appropriate, where it's not, but it is very much the standard in our CBD that I recall. So, I was hoping somebody here could shed some light on that debate, because I don't, I don't quite understand those two elements of it.
Commissioner Macy?
So, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but we did get a very lengthy email from one of the dissenters today that I think addresses this, so I'm trying, just trying to look and see where it is. You cannot have walkable neighborhoods with nowhere to walk to and structures too large and close to the busy street to walk past. So, I mean, that, that is one piece of a very long email, but I was trying to find it when you said it, so that's from Miss Beke.
And I read that, too, and it feels very inconsistent with, with development that has been approved unanimously by the body and is, and our approach to walkability. Scale of a building doesn't make an area less walkable, as far, as far as any planning philosophy that I'm aware of, density promotes walkability. Living within, people having residences within 10 minutes of grocery stores and medical facilities and entertainment and, and places of business, that's all part of walkability. There's something in that email I just quite did not understand, it felt wildly contrary to the way that the Planning Commission and every member of the Planning Commission has been approaching walkability, so, but apparently no one at the table has insight in that debate. It just, it was incongruent with many of the conversations we've had at this table and the Planning Commission at this table. All right, that was my initial question. Any other questions for Mr. Hedges? I can see any of their hands up, was that one, Commissioner Macy?
I don't know if this is for, you were not, but I'll ask anyway. So, what's, what was the overall feel, it sounds like you weren't there, of the community benefits of this plan?
I don't think that was an issue that was addressed in our staff report to the Planning Commission, and what conversations they may have had at the meeting, I'm not aware of.
Thank you.
I think, watching the rule, apparently I was watching it, not there, I think Mr. Gantina was the other, no vote, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Gantina.
Miss Beke.
Miss Beke.
Yeah, I think Mr. Gantina had articulated some perspectives on the environmental sustainability elements of the building, and, you know, moving that ball more forward, so I think that was his, if I remember correctly, which I thought was a fair remark at, at the point in time, so. In addition to Miss Beke's email, I believe, not speaking on behalf of Mr. Gantina, but I believe that was where he was coming from.
Thank you.
Okay.
From the petitioner.
All right, anybody else? All right, I see the petitioners here tonight, as customary, we always give petitioners the opportunity after the report to say a few words and kind of run by your proposal, and I think, Mr. Cowan, you'll kick it off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Dennis Cowan, with the firm of Plunkett Cooney, and I represented North Main Square at the Planning Commission, so I was there for all three hours, so I can answer any questions about that meeting, and I'll clarify a few things that Commissioner Dubb brought up. With me this evening is the principal of North Main Square, Jordan Jonah, and also our architect of record, Kevin Biddson of Biddson Architecture Design. So, I'm going to do an overview, and then Mr. Jordan would also like to, Mr. Jonah, excuse me, would also like to address you. So, first of all, we were extremely pleased by the Planning Commission's recommendation to you for approval of our site plan and the amendment to the PUD. There was significant public comment that night, probably about twice as long as this evening, a lot of issues were brought up, and they were thoroughly discussed, and I think at the end of the day, the majority on the Planning Commission accepted the proposal that we had made, and I can make a few clarifications as we go through. So, that is the action of your Planning Commission and our city's Planning Commission that propelled us to be before you tonight. So, North Main Square is proposing a five-story mixed-use building that includes retail, office, and residential components, and I want to make a clarification right now, these are not condos, they are apartments. Small distinction, but I think that's important for everyone to know. We hope people who live in apartments in Royal Oak eventually buy a home in Royal Oak, and many of them do because they're impressed with the community, and we think that'll be the case here. We believe it's the only building in Royal Oak, and certainly the only new construction that represents all three of these uses, and these are important because they're in the city's master plan. The encouragement for development in downtown is to have mixed uses, as I have mentioned, and this development certainly complies with that requirement in Section 3 of the master plan. And one of the bylines that all of us use in Royal Oak is live, work, and play in the community, and certainly this building will exemplify all of those goals. I might also note that all three of these uses have been previously approved by the city in other parts of this PUD, so these are not new uses to the PUD. The original proposal by the initial developer 18 years ago was on this site to have a 12-story mixed-use building. North Main Square believes its proposal is modest compared to that rather gargantuan structure that was going to be on the corner of 12, 11 Mile and Main. Obviously, the property at this corner is a central location in our community, and North Main Square believes it has proposed a building that represents this important piece of our downtown geography. As you know, it's often said in real, about real estate that it's all about location, 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 and North Main Square is very appreciative of the opportunity to build a great building in a great location. The retail component is about 9,300 square feet, with the retail facing Main Street, which is very consistent with all of the other buildings north of 11 Mile and clearly south of 11 Mile on Main Street. We believe that this site will attract retail, quality retail users, especially those in the industry who are attracted to premier locations. With respect to the office space, Class A office space, which we are proposing, is still much needed in downtown Royal Oak to attract businesses and workers to our downtown. The Class A office space will help realize Royal Oak's downtown task force requirement or recommendation that they made in 2017, that more office space in downtown is needed to draw restaurant service and retail customers. With respect to the residential space, the top three floors will be of various sizes of units, and there will only be 51 units. We're not seeking to compete in the luxury market, we believe that is oversaturated in downtown Royal Oak. And as we noted in our letter, and as was mentioned by Mr. Hedges, the Planning Commission did approve the request that there'll be an alternative for the third floor to be office instead of residential. We are speaking with a potential user, unfortunately, we're on a non, under a non-disclosure agreement who is consolidating several offices in the southeastern Michigan region, and if that comes to fruition, there would be two 30,000 floor plates that would be utilized for a total of 60,000 square feet, so we do have that option, and we appreciate that consideration by the Planning Commission, and hope you will also adopt that viewpoint. There are some other important building features, some of which have already been mentioned, restalling the main art theater marquee, we would like that to be able to be used for community, city, and civic-type events and messages, such as the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, or perhaps an event at Centennial Park. There will also most likely be limited commercial use, such as announcing a new business in downtown or Restaurant Week, and we also confirm and will agree on the record that the sign will not be converted to any type of LED sign. We very much believe the marquee, which has always been a wayfinding sign in downtown Royal Oak, be preserved as much as possible. I was a little surprised to hear someone say earlier they didn't see any environmental features or sustainable features in the plans because they are numerous. Unfortunately, the site does not allow us to do too much by way of greenery or landscaping, but there are significant sustainable features. First of all, we will have two EV charging stations for four vehicles inside the building, and at the request and recommendation of Chairperson Casada, we added an additional two EV charging stations for four vehicles on the eastern perimeter of the building that will be available to the public, so there'll be a total of four EV charging stations for eight cars, four in the interior and four on the exterior. I hazard to say that's more than any other building currently has in downtown Royal Oak. We also added solar panels to the roof, there's a little complication because we are still investigating this, but we have, part of the problem of having them on the roof is we have neighbors to the north, and there might be a definitive glare from the engineer who is, who is giving us the recommendation, we can, we have some now behind the mechanical structure or room that is on top of the building. We hope to add more if the engineers can figure out a way to reduce the glare if we move them farther away from the building, or the mechanical building on top. We will also be using E-rated windows, highly efficient HVAC systems, and LED lighting. Mr. Jonah will also add an important announcement about sustainability, but I'm going to let him make that announcement, but I would add that all of the environmental features that we have are being provided voluntarily. We recognize the fact that a couple of weeks ago you passed a plan, but there are no standards for that plan yet, and there certainly are no ordinance standards, but we recognize that is something important, and we believe collectively, on their own, provide an important community benefit, and also this building will be a leader in downtown in environmental sustainability. That has been suggested, and we are responding. The, and one other important issue with respect to sustainability, North Main Square with this building will not be adding to the stormwater system as the entire property is already hard-serviced, and in fact, there is stormwater already in place to accommodate this structure. There may have to be some fine tuning, but that was, that was done as the project has proceeded over time. With respect to public art, North Main Square is planning to have components of public art on the building, including a potential mural on the east side of the building facing Imagine Theater. There may be some other opportunities for public art, we'll have to see how that would specifically fit, but Mr. Jonah and his team have expressed an interest in having public art part of the building. So, the, one of the issues you have to take into account is all of the criteria, the six criteria that are established for the, in the Royal Oak PUD ordinance. North Main Square believes we have met or exceeded all six of those standards, and I spelled that out in my letter to you, but there are a few points. First and foremost, the development's consistent with the Royal Oak master plan and the overall PUD plan to transform this entire northeast corner of 11 Mile and Main, and I do want to point out, I think it bears noting, that this is not a case where we have a completely full canvas to deal with. 90% of this canvas has already been developed. This is actually the last corner, and about 10% of the viable space of this property, and this was something that was set into motion, so this is, in essence, the final piece of the puzzle of a process that was started over 18 years ago, has went through a couple of different developers, and I think has ended up in the hands of a very responsible development company. In particular, this project will enhance the physical appearance of the downtown, and as I previously mentioned, meet your mixed-use goals as stated in the master plan. We also are promoting a pedestrian friendly environment, and will obviously maintain the currently continuous walkway. I do want to point out that at the meeting, the setback issue was brought up, we are actually increasing the setback, and if I recall correctly, it's eight, it's going to be 18 feet. The setback will be more than the setback is today where the walls are, where the half, those kind of half-walls are on the corner, and that is why the Planning Commission didn't request a change in the setback, because they heard that explanation from our engineer, and they went through in some detail about what the spacing was going to be. So, I'm a little surprised to hear about objections based on setback, because quite frankly, that question was asked and answered at the Planning Commission. Planning Commission, which I've been to before many times, and when they have a setback issue, they'll let you know about it, but obviously the majority of the Planning Commission... Planning Commission, which I've been to before many times, and when they have a setback issue, they'll let you know about it, but obviously, the majority of the Planning Commission was satisfied with that setback issue and did not request any change. And finally, the project will not burden any existing public services, streets, or utilities, and we believe will not result in any negative impact on any surrounding properties. So several years ago, the city's Downtown Task Force had a goal to create additional office space at, and I quote from their plan, "new strategically-located fabulous mid-rise buildings." We believe the main building and its office component will help meet that goal. We request your approval of the PUD amendment and the site plan, and that you follow the recommendation which your Planning Commission has made in terms of approval. At this time, I'm going to introduce Jordan Jonah to come up and have a few remarks, and then we'll be here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Dennis.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Jordan Jonah. I'm representing our family company, AF Jonah Development Management Company. We are a Michigan-based company outside of, right in Bloomfield, Almondshire, not too far away from here. We have done multiple projects in the city of Royal Oak, which we are very proud of. We take pride in what we develop. We manage it all in our office, and it's home to us. I come and I'm a frequent user of Royal Oak. I drive by our buildings and our developments, and I'm proud of them. It's more personal to us, too. But to understand where we're at, I think we have to talk about where we've been. And a little history about the building and where we've gone. We purchased this building in 2017. Landmark was a tenant of our, when we purchased property. We were very excited to have Landmark as a tenant. They were the largest chain operator of theaters in the country. We thought it was good. We liked the investment. Lo and behold, their year-over-year, the revenue and their attendance was decreasing, and this is before the mandatory shutdowns of the theater. They decided to turn back the keys to us. I think that's very important to know, that they came to us with a settlement to turn back the keys, terminate the lease, and give us possession of the building. Right away, we did reach out to other experienced operators to see what their flavor would be on opening a theater here. We had zero interest from experienced operators. One is a very local one here that said the building is, has not been maintained by the Landmark Theater, needs a very big investment, and it's not feasible. We did talk to them about showing main art theaters, mainstream art theaters in their complex. They're very open to it and still would be very happy to house any art film possible. So the building's been sitting vacant for over a year now. So we go to the drawing board and say, hey, what can we do with this property? What is the best solution for this corner? We look at building over the building or demoing part of the building, and we come up with a conclusion that it's just not feasible. This building is an old building. It's not a sustainable building. We believe the aesthetics would not look right building over this building either. There's a ton of deferred maintenance. It does not meet ADA standard. There would be major renovations into this building that we just do not believe is sustainable. With the studies that we're doing here, and what we've done, we've came up with redeveloping the site, and we came up with a five-story mixed-use building. Looking down north on Eleven Mile, there are very tall buildings that have been recently built. We didn't feel that a nine- or ten- or twelve-story building fit the corner here. Across the street, there's a four-story, five-story, nine-story, goes up further there, but just south of Eleven Mile, there's two-story buildings. So we wanted to put a transition building in, so you're not coming off of Eleven Mile looking down and seeing a very, very large building that's out of place. The gradual grade of the height, we felt, fit this corner, and it's a very good use. The building, we always strive for a building that can sustain different downturns, and we came up with a mixed-use building, which has retail office and multifamily. So this is a live-work-play building, which is very sustainable. We believe it's the right corner, of course. Through all the press of this development, we've actually had a lot of inquiries for the building. So we feel very confident that this will be a very good partnership between us and the city to make a sustainable development here. A little bit about the building. The building is a four-sided architectural building. So all four sides, there's not technically a back of the building here. We've dressed it up as best as possible. We did add solar panels to the top of the building, which was a comment from a planning commissioner, and we incorporated this into the building, and we would do as much as possible without affecting our neighbors and being respectful to them, just because of the glares. We are going to build this building to a LEED standard. We've made the commitment here. This is something that is sustainable for us. But there's a few things that do not go into account with a LEED standard building. We've put balconies on all the floors here. So on nice days in Michigan, I know there's not a lot of them, but when we do get them, even the office is able to open up their balconies and bring in fresh air, turn off their systems, and don't use as much power to operate the building. It's a feature that not a lot of offices have. We think it's a great amenity, and we're excited to bring this. We did add the charging stations. There are various size units here for multifamily also, which is important to understand when it comes to the renter that would come to the building. They're not huge units by any means. There are a few three-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, one-bedrooms, and also studios. Studios, of course, will go for less money than a three-bedroom, so we feel we get a good mix of different renters that are able to live in the building. I think that's a very important aspect when you're looking at what is developed, not that is sustainable for different renters, which we feel confident about. The building does have all LED, all LED lighting, low-e glass, high-efficiency fixtures, which brings it up to a LEED standard. We are going to build this building out of all steel, which gives us the ability to utilize our roof as outdoor space, local community spaces for the building. And just want to make sure I got all my notes here. Charging stations right there also. And as a personal note, I believe this building is a very good-looking building that fits in very well in the city, and I'm happy to answer any questions and concerns. The architect is here tonight, too, that can discuss the project.
Questions for the petitioner. Mr. Hunt.
Can you explain how you resolved the issue with the north-facing wall, the facade that was still a bit unresolved after the Planning Commission meeting?
So there was both sides. The south-facing wall, we came up with a new design to hide the car, the vehicle traffic inside the building. And also, the north side is a property line issue, which we own all the property lines. So it's like a imaginary line that we have to move here. Not an issue. It's been addressed in different ways. We suggested a no-build zone that we could put in PUD that we thought would be fine. I believe the city has done this before, but we would move the property line.
And there's going to be a common area on the top of the roof?
Yes, we do have the ability to do this with this construction type.
Have you thought about putting green space up there or some sort of greenery or lawn to reduce runoff?
There would be very little green space. It's very difficult to build a green roof today.
If I just could add, keep in mind, we have the outdoor space for the tenants of the building. We have a mechanical room, as well as other mechanical aspects that have to be up on top, and the solar panels. So there's only so much room for so many things. So we don't, but of course, one of those are a sustainable feature, being the solar panels.
Is there any green space incorporated?
There might be some, no, not specific, you know, green space like you would say a rain yard or something like that, no. But there will be plants. I mean, we're going to have plantings on the top of the building to augment the community space.
And I believe it should know, we're not adding to the system right now. Right now, it's a hard surface that is already accounted for with the stormwater system that's been put into place, so we're not adding to the runoff of water here.
Thank you.
Christian Macy.
Just a quick on that, but you're not doing anything better about the runoff either, right? It's going to be status quo runoff. Right now, it's all concrete, and it still will be? Yes?
Yes, there's asphalt in building there for now, so.
Okay, I just want to ask, so it will be LEED certified? I couldn't tell if you were saying it definitely would or that it was mostly going to be?
Oh, we are building it to LEED standard, yes.
Okay, so you'll pursue the LEED certification? Or I couldn't tell what the thing about the balconies was. Does that make it not?
No, that's just another add-on that I think should be taken into account because you necessarily don't get points for it, but it is a great feature to have, that you don't have to run your fresh air intakes and so forth. On nice days, you can actually open up the windows and doors.
Okay, I couldn't tell if you're saying it's going to LEED except this balcony.
No, no, it's just another add-on point that I think is important to understand, that we're going, in my mind, it's about to be on. It's not something we would get credit for on a LEED certificate, but.
Okay, and I know you were here, and you heard everything that was happening in public comment. So this has been a home for the arts for many years, and I heard you say there's a wall that could potentially be a mural someday. Is there any other conversations that you've had that have sparked an idea for other ways to incorporate the arts into this building? Anything you've got in the pipeline?
We don't have anything that's necessarily going to be concrete that we can say that's going into this building right now because there is nothing. This is a spec building that we're doing. I have talked to our neighbor at the Imagine, and they are fully supportive of dedicating film rooms to show art theaters. There was some discussion, and we're still open to it. We're waiting responses and so forth, and as soon as we do have it, we're happy to sit down and look to see if it's feasible or not and move on from there.
I think, as already been mentioned, we did commit to having a meeting next week. We have had two meetings with the Friends. That was about them operating the theater. We declined that lease proposal. I assume the next discussion will be about some type of screening room. We haven't seen any plans. We asked for a plan. We assume those are going to be forthcoming to us because we have to have something to evaluate. You just can't do it in a kind of a vacuum. But they also would have to compete with other tenants since this whole potential tenants, since this has all evolved, there's been a lot of interest in people coming to the building, both retail tenants, and of course, we already have an office tenant we're talking with. But there's been other interest expressed, so we're pleased with that, and we think that shows the viability of a new building with Class A office space in downtown Royal Oak.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at. It seems like there's been some conversations, and we had heard about a screening room possibility, and I wasn't sure if that was, sounds like that will be discussed.
Yes, we've discussed, we've had a few meetings with the Save the Main Art Theater, Save the Main group. We asked them for a proposal, and this was a few months back. We have not received it, and as soon as we do, we're happy to sit down and talk and see if it's a feasible plan.
And you mentioned, Mr. Callen, that there's an office, someone who's interested in the office space, maybe even more office space than is currently offered. Has there, has there been interest as well in the retail space?
Yes, there, we have had interest in the retail space. I don't think we can, we're not able to expand the retail space. That would pretty much be set in stone at the ninety-three-hundred square feet.
So we have not marketed the space to. The inquiries we received were from the press, we received on the building. As soon as we do have a concrete-approved plan, that's when we would be able to market it and see what retailers, users are available. I know it's been a lot of press around the demo of the building, but it's also been a positive spin that we do have some activity on lease base for the office, which makes us feel good and confident about the development, of course.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I feel a little bit like there's a missed opportunity here. There's a lot of excitement and energy around this space, and to diverge totally from that group without trying to incorporate them and their interests in bringing that energy here, it does feel like, I'm glad to hear there's a meeting going forward, there will be further discussions, but it feels like, you know, this is a really marquee space, pardon the pun, in our downtown area, and bringing something really special there, I think, would be really appealing. And, you know, it's great to hear about the LEED, and it sounds like, you know, there's some environmental things. I guess I'm not super overwhelmed by the sustainability things that are being offered. Or, you know, the community benefits part, to me, feels like it's lacking in this. So that's kind of what I was looking to hear a little bit more about today from you.
Well, first of all, I think it's also always a benefit to the community to have new construction, new development, new uses of older space. There's job creation that's involved. There's economic activity that will be enhanced and increased. But specifically, we believe that the community benefits that we propose, both the sustainable features and the public art, are very important. No one project can be all things to all people. We can't check every box that everyone wants us to check. So as a result, we believe we've made an extremely good faith effort, not only with the public art, the preservation of the marquee, which again, I think has always been a very important wayfinding sign here, and the sustainable features. We think all three of those collectively give a community benefit in addition to the economic value that will be brought to the downtown.
Mr. Dubac.
Thank you, Mayor. So kind of along the lines of what Commissioner Macy's ahead, like I appreciate the aesthetic of the building. I think it's a good fit for the corner. I think the economic benefit is, we have building going on all over the city, and that's clearly a very desirable place to, you know, build. So I don't think that's necessarily something that's a benefit that's checking a box for me as far as a community benefit. Environmental sustainability, affordability, public art, responsible contracting, these are all things we've discussed as part of a community benefits ordinance, which, you're right, we do not have an ordinance in place, which means it's up to each one of us to decide if we think you've met that threshold. So, I mean, just given the significance of this space, given that there's a significant number of, I could feel like we would be losing something in losing the name, but I totally understand, you know, that that's part of this process, you know, in spite of the fact that I may love it, too. I would like to see a little bit more meat to some of these benefits. Like, if we were to move forward tonight with recommending, you know, approval pending you agree to LEED certification of the building, is that something you'd consider?
Yes.
I mean, I know it's an additional expense, but confident you're going to do okay.
Yes, we're going to build to the standard any which way we're in.
I'm talking about LEED certification, not standard. I'm talking about actually getting the plaque and letting them do the scoring and, like, I mean, you can say solar panels to me, but I'm like, all right, how many, what are you going to generate? How much of your energy consumption is that?
Yes, it's not a problem.
So you would not oppose if we put into this approval required LEED certification?
Not a problem.
Cool. Also, on the public art, again, I appreciate Commissioner Macy wants you to operate and discuss some good faith as you're developing the building. I know you've got some other folks that are interested. It's a marquee spot. It's going to be in demand. I would hope you would consider any reasonable proposal. I do, I'm curious as to what a nonprofit operating an art house theater is going to be able to, you know, make rent for a brand-new building like this, but I don't know that business, so I hope you hear them out. But as far as the mural goes, so you're making the space available, are you also committing to pay for a mural to be put there, like, to pay an artist to do a mural at some point? Is that?
Yes.
Part of it. I understand you're making the space available. I'm saying, is it your intent? intention that you would then be paying an artist at some point to off, to design and put a mural there?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so with lead certification, with a commitment that you're actually, the building owner is going to facilitate the art, and then also work in good faith, at least to hear out the Friends of the Main, I think those are material benefits that could get us...
And while, and I know I'm going to get to you, Commissioner Collo, but since Commissioner Dubac is listing things, one of the things that I'm passionate about, and I've asked, kind of all fairness with other development projects, usually at the planning commission, what about veteran transition housing? Is this something that you're able to support and work with at least a unit, work with the county, and, you know?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I think that's important. For those of you who don't know about veteran transition housing, this is for, it's a program through the county where we have people that are off deployment coming back into, you know, back into, you know, stateside, sometimes they don't have apartments, they don't have homes, and they may live in an apartment for six months and kind of get re-acclimated, get a job, all of those things, so that's something I always ask for whenever we're going down the list here, so good to hear that. Okay, Commissioner Collo?
It's shocking, why, I lost stuff, too. So I have a couple of questions here. One, I actually, I really appreciate those two commitments you just made, that's kind of swinging the pendulum for me a little here, although instead of lead certification, I personally rather spend that money, maybe a permanent parking lot instead, but I appreciate the need for a lead certification, I think that's, that's a next level.
Sorry.
It, you know, personally, I would have preferred a permanent parking lot as opposed to expense of that lead certification, but I do appreciate the lead certification, so thank you for committing to that lead certification.
That would make a difference because the parking lot's under the building.
Gotcha. So, so one question, you know, once again, getting back to the main group, early on, it was suggested maybe that the city should buy the building and donate, and run the theater like that. Is this building for sale?
No, it is not.
Okay. We can't offer you a sum to buy this?
No.
Okay. Because that's, you know, we can't take over, can't take it by eminent domain, I mean, we could, I'm sure, but we'd probably be sued.
No.
Not for this cost.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, the lawsuit would be astronomical and we would lose quickly.
You've just built two buildings, you sure you want to buy a third?
So, you know, I know, I've spoken with the main group, actually, Jason and I had a lovely conversation, and I've tried to connect you guys also, Dennis, Mr. Cowan and I have talked a lot about how to facilitate these conversations, because this is an important conversation to have. If it's not in this building, I truly hope that over at Imagine, we can, there's infrastructure there already to show art theater movies, and an enjoyable experience with chairs that are, you know, actually comfortable, and although popcorn's not quite as good as the main was. Yeah, so my big questions are around, you know, could we potentially buy it, and it sounds like that's not feasible here. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Perush.
This is kind of a follow-up question, could you elaborate a little bit more about the condition of the existing building that you are aware of? I know that you, and we are all aware of the fact that it has not been repaired, and it certainly has, is not ADA compliant and so on. Do you have any kind of cost estimates, ballparks as to what it would take to get it up to, so that you could actually have the public come back in it again?
It, I have to tell you, it is in very bad shape. There would be an old new roof, all new HVAC, all the projectors are gone, it'd be very difficult to create an ADA building out of this, the building also. The building does flood all the time, there's a hot water table here on this corner. Couldn't give you an exact ballpark of how much, I don't know if, but I know it is a lot of money, and I know the experienced theater operators that looked at it all said, this does not make sense, by any means.
I don't think any of us had heard about the flooding, that was another element that adds to the, to the, to the indication that the building itself is just not really sound for anything much anymore.
It is not.
And you have to take into account that it's not just, it's, it would be open to the public, and so you have to make all the public accommodations, bathrooms and widths of aisles and all of the other stuff to make it ADA compliant, that the actual, you know, wall shapes of the building probably do not lend themselves to at all. That's my sense, the way it is designed and built. The other thing, there was another question about stormwater, it's my understanding, and I think it's true, that all new buildings in Royal Oak have to provide stormwater detention on-site, and I'm looking at your plans, and in fact, there is underground stormwater detention on your site, is that correct?
Yes.
Right, so we not only have a building that is designed environmentally much more efficiently than what is there now, which is asphalt and a cinder block building, but you're also going to have stormwater detention on-site, which will not put stormwater into the sister system that is beyond its capacity. It will be designed in order to compete and fulfill the environmental requirements and the stormwater requirements for our ordinance, so that's built into the plan. Thanks, those are all my questions.
Any other questions with the petitioner? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, bringing the discussion back at this end of the table.
Just in closing, just two points. First of all, as usual, we want to thank your planning department, they were always very helpful, and second of all, there has been an enormous amount of respect between Mr. Jones and his organization and the Friends management or leadership. We had two excellent meetings, we've had telephone discussions, we've committed to another meeting. There is no animosity, I think, on the part of either side, there's just some hard decisions that have to be made, that have, you know, kind of fallen in the lap unexpectedly for North Main Square, so I just wanted that to be stated on the record, because Mr. Krizniak has stated that, and I wanted that to also be coming from our side of the table, that there is a great amount of mutual respect. We also admire the passion of many of the supporters, we understand what they're fighting for. We're not certain it falls totally in our lap, but certainly we have a role of some sort as we move forward, and we will give whatever proposal they bring to us due consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, discussion. Go with Commissioner Dubac.
Sure. Okay, so I know there's been a lot of discussion around this site. I think, Mayor, like you said earlier, I really appreciate everyone's, you know, passion and input, and I do want to get to the idea that, you know, I have read every single email, have not been able to respond to them all, it's because of time constraints and everyday life, but I have read them all, and I'm hearing every word everyone says, and I love the main, too, and, like, I suspect everyone that's one of the Friends here, you know, I'm a cinephile, movies are my family's love language, it is, and how we relate to each other since I can remember. Lot of great memories in the main art, my wife and I dressed up to go see Rocky Horror, I've seen dozens of great and very many not-so-great movies there, but even the not-so-great movies are still a great experience, and that's something I'll cherish forever. But loving it doesn't make it legal or ethical or give any of us at this table the, you know, the right to leverage the power of government to essentially take someone's property or dictate a specific business be run on that property. But we have been working in good faith and discussing in good faith, you know, how that element of the main can be preserved. Now, I, for one, I really liked that they're preserving the marquee, I know folks have scoffed and rolled their eyes at it, but I think it matters, you know, the facade of Herman's Bakery is historically protected. It's not going to be a bakery, it is likely not going to be a bakery.
It's a bakery.
Is it a bakery?
It is.
Oh, well, it doesn't have to be that.
No, it doesn't have to be.
It doesn't have to be. But the facade is, the aesthetic is what people are committed to, and I think that the main art marquee is as much a part of the DNA of the city as I think people are saying that the fact that it is an art house theater is. So I think it is worthwhile to recognize that that is a valuable part of this development, that that is not going away and will remain a part of our Main Street regardless of what happens tonight. So I appreciate that commitment, and I think it, I think it matters, and I think it demonstrates that the developer recognizes the importance the main has on our Main Street. So reflecting, you know, the Friends have, you've talked about the plan to operate the theater and raised some other examples, and the plan is not unique, which is true, but the situation is unique from everything I've read, because I've read about a lot of the other examples, folks have sent and said, hey, look at what they did in Nashville, look what they did in Farmington, and the difference is, in all the scenarios that I read about, there was always a wealthy benefactor driving that bus. They either owned the theater, or swept in and bought the theater, or sold it to the municipality way under market value so it could be preserved as a theater. That's, that was the same, all of those scenarios, that's what had happened, there was no scenario where the government came in and paid 120% of our market value that I know of to preserve one. So, and I don't, as much as I think Royal Oakers, if we hold them, would say, yes, we love it, save the main, and have us said, okay, but it's going to come at the cost of, you know, two-thirds of the police force for a year, like, people are not going to support that, it's, you know, it's a lot of money. And that is not to diminish the value of it, but I'm just trying to talk about the reality of what we can do as a government, and which has, you know, nothing to do, again, with how I might personally feel about the theater. We've forced the developer in good faith to have these conversations, pursue, like, I can vouch for the fact that they did talk to other credible operators, and those credible operators said this is just not viable to run some movie theater without substantial investment, and so if you're talking about running a nonprofit in this space as a sustainable business, but you're going to start, you know, a million dollars in the hole, it's just, it's, it's, it's just not doable, from what I stand, and again, I'm not an expert in the business. So with regard to the community benefits, like, I addressed the walkability, I think it's odd, folks are pointing this development as being non-walkable, and, you know, identity apartments, mixed-use, you know, first-floor retail office, those are all walkability strategies that we deploy, not just in Royal Oak, but all over the region, all over the country, that's, that's what walkability is, is unbroken space for pedestrians to interact with. On environmental sustainability, multifamily housing is a key piece of sustainability strategy, multifamily housing is far more efficient than single-family housing, and there is, in fact, a housing shortage, and a lot of folks have said, is there demand for this? I'm like, I think everything I've read says there's a housing shortage, so I assume so, but I also assume that the banks and the folks doing the financing have done the math on whether or not they're going to get people to pay them to live there, and that's, that's their job to know that, so I'm just looking at the benefits to the city. Environmental stability is a top priority, we've been pressing on this for a long time, which is why, you know, I'm pressing the developer to say, let's, let's take this a step further to really lock this in as a lead-certified project, so it's not just, you know, kind of like performative sustainability, but we can look at a third party as saying, like, this is a model sustainable building, and we are saying this is how we want people to build in Royal Oak. The art, I think, is a valuable asset, you know, as far as the aesthetic of the city and still celebrating the art, and I know other folks have come forward and said, someone pointed out, I'm not saying the theater's not a loss, but it's been kind of framed as if we lose the main art, we're losing all culture and history in Royal Oak, but we clearly still have the Baldwin and the Royal Oak Music Theater and the Royal Oak Library and many other places that celebrate arts and culture in our city. I'm not saying that doesn't mean this is a loss, but this is not a zero-sum gain with regard to whether or not we celebrate our history and our art and culture in this city. Let's see. So, with all that being said, with the additions we discussed, that being requirement that the new building be lead-certified, and commitment from the developer to not just make space available, but to actually fund a mural, which would of course have to go through our approval at the Commission for the Arts for, for public art, I will move for the recommendation of the planning commission to approve the development.
Motion by Commissioner Dubac, is there a second? Mr. Ray, I was about to say, there was a third that the mayor brought up, did you want to add that to your motion?
Yeah, the veteran transition housing, and then a good faith effort to work with the, Save the Main to lease the space. Yes, the veteran transition housing and the commitment to continue to meet with the Friends of Main before the space is leased.
So we have lead, mural, good faith effort with the folks of Maine to try to find a way to get a screening room in there, and then veteran transition housing.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Dubac, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion. Commissioner Perush.
This first comment is kind of a follow-up to something that Commissioner Dubac was just talking about, and that is some of the other theaters in the region that have been saved. In listening to some of the commentary station, it seems like some people are of the opinion that Royal Oak has never gone down this road, and they don't care about saving older structures, but the city was very, very intimately involved with saving two other theaters within the city of Royal Oak. The first one is the Royal Oak Music Theater, which is a component of the Washington Square Building, which is the only, first, not the only, but the first Royal Oak high-rise, is at the corner of Fourth and Washington. It was built in 1927, and it's primarily an office building with some retail on the first floor, and it actually housed Beaumont Hospital when Beaumont Hospital was founded, for a time being until they moved out to the big mothership out on Thirteenth Mile Road. But the Washington Square Building does include the Royal Oak Music Theater, and in the early 1980s, when all of the retail establishments, the major retail establishments had moved out of Royal Oak, like Montgomery Wards and like Kresge's, a number of the buildings were sitting empty. The owners of the Washington Square Building, the Hannah Brothers, came to the city and expressed interest in renovating the building so that it could remain viable, including the theater. At that time, Royal Oak was not only, was not the only city that was struggling with downtowns, that were having trouble remaining viable in the era when all the malls were being built, and the state was also very interested in having the downtowns preserved as well. So the state, with state legislation, actually approved a couple of things that the Royal Oak took strong advantage of. One was a system of commercial tax abatements, which are not available anymore, only industrial ones are, but there were commercial tax abatements available for downtown buildings so that they could invest in their, in their buildings and realize a tax benefit. Another thing that the city did at the time was use some community development block grant funds in conjunction and cooperation with the National Bank of Royal Oak, which was a local bank in existence at that time, to write down interest rates for business loans for people who wanted to buy, wanted to borrow money in order to rehab their buildings. And the third program was a system of architectural assistance for building redesign, and we partnered with local architects to give businesses assistance in terms of architectural features of their building. And the Washington Square Building took advantage of all three of those. They got tax abatements, they got some low-interest loans from the National Bank of Royal Oak, and they also used a little bit of architectural assistance, and they managed to save not only the building and make it viable, but also the Royal Oak Music Theater. So that's one example of the city's involvement in one theater operation. Another one was the former Washington Theater, which was at Washington Street and Fifth, which is now the Baldwin Theater. At the time, it was also built in 1922, it's even older than the Washington Square Building, but in the early 1980s, it was only showing second-run movies, it was competing with other theaters in the area, including the big multiplexes that were being built, and it was really struggling, and eventually it closed. People who were interested in it, though, at the time, were the X-rated movie houses, because back at the time, if you wanted to watch pornographic films, of course, there was no internet, you went to the, you went to the theater, and the operators were very interested in this vacant theater sitting right there, and the city became aware of it, and so the Downtown Development Authority reached out to the owner and offered to purchase at a bargain basement price, he was more than willing to get it off its hands. So it was purchased by the Downtown Development Authority, who in turn demolished the long lobby and the marquee that... lobby and the marquee that went all the way out to Washington, and then sold that part of the land to, again, the Hannah Brothers, who built the Fifth, which is the very large condominium building on that site. And then also, for a very modest, modest sum, sold the theater component to stagecrafters, which was an ongoing, very strong community theater organization in the region who had been looking for a new home. They recognized that in order to renovate the theater so that it could be actually usable, it would take years, which it did, it took about two years of renovations, blood, sweat, and tears from the stagecrafters and all of their volunteers, but they turned it into a viable theater that, of course, you all know is now owed to live stage performances. So the city was very involved with those theater projects and making them remain viable within the community. We did that for other historic structures in the community, not just theaters. A number of downtown buildings are in historic districts, they're protected. We have the Orson Star House, the Almond Star House, which are protected historic districts. Those kind of went through city purchases in some instances and restrictions and restrictive covenants and that to protect the historic nature of it. So the city's been very involved with preserving historic structures that are both for entertainment purposes as well as for other purposes. But the one thing that is a universal component in all of those projects, all of them, including the ones that are in other communities, that you've mentioned Farmington, you've mentioned other communities that have civic theaters, every single one of them, at one point or another, had owner buy-in for the project. We had, you had a cooperative owner who said, yeah, I'll sell it to you at a bargain basement price, or, like the Hannah Brothers, we'd like to stay in the building and owning the building, we just need help. There was owner involvement, positive owner involvement in every single one of those projects that we have mentioned or that you all have mentioned. That's not the case here. We do not have an owner that wants to save this theater because he recognizes that it's obsolete, functionally obsolete. It would cost a small fortune in order to make it habitable again, open to the public, ADA compliant, not flood and every other issue that it's got. So unfortunately, that's the situation that we've got here. The other thing that I would recommend for those who are such fans of independent theater and independent film, is that just if the main theater goes away, it doesn't mean that independent film in the community has to go away. The Pre-Press Film Institute or the film project that it has, that it had this past April, doesn't exist in a single building. It shows films in the Imagine Theater out in Birmingham, in other theaters in the city of Detroit, and in other venues. They don't have their own building. They scatter the films throughout the region in southeast Oakland County. The same could be true for a Royal Oak Film Festival. We have lots of entertainment venues and performance spaces within the community that could certainly host a film festival, either over a short period of time, like the Pre-Press one over a week or five days, or where they're over a period of years, or one a month or whatever in the community. Just because the theater itself goes away doesn't mean that independent film has to go away. I'm in the Board of Directors of the Royal Symphony Orchestra, which just awarded the best community orchestra in the region for the second straight year. We don't have our own performance space. We perform four concerts in a season at the Royal Oak Middle School. So just because the Royal Oak Symphony Orchestra doesn't have its own performance menu like Orchestra Hall, doesn't mean that we can't do orchestral symphonic music within the community. Film has got to be the same way, could be the same way. You yourself showed a film as a fundraiser at the Royal Oak Farmers Market. OCC has a theater with an extraordinary stage, which is so unused, they use it for storage. I mean, there's all kinds of venues within the community which are perfect for showing film. It doesn't have to go away. And I think your organization is best facilitated to put that together. You guys could do it. You could do it very easily, and you don't need the main theater in order to do it. I understand the, you know, this nostalgia for the theater, I understand that. I like old buildings too, but this one really is functionally obsolete, and it really could not be, I don't think, turned around effectively. So anyway, so I support the motion, bottom line.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is also really hard for me, and I thank Commissioner Perush for that. He has always amazing history on this. Commissioner Perush's history is always just so enlightening. You know, I thought a lot, you know, I'm looking at this in two ways here. I'm looking at the proposal for the art house, you know, the main theater itself and then this building. So let's talk about the, you know, main itself. You know, the main, like, many people in this room, is special to a lot of people, including me. I literally would not be here if not for the main. My grandparents had their first date at the main right after it opened. Grandma told me, you know, a story about it, about some parking, a light post in the back of the parking lot, and went on to talk more about the back of the parking lot than I ever wanted to hear my grandma discuss, but it was, you know, it's, it was their first date over eight years, seventy, eighty years ago. My family and I enjoy the main also, but it is sad that the building is so dilapidated. It is sad that it is in such poor repair that it can't be renovated. My in-laws are working, there's a Hippodrome Theater in Baltimore that my in-laws are part of the reconstruction project of right now. It's a beautiful $18 million project to restore this classic theater. But once again, kind of a common theme here, is that was the design and planned use, and they had a benefactor who could provide $18 million to restore this theater. There's not a benefactor in this situation here. Even that sum, the city could not be a benefactor for $18 million to restore this piece of property. So it is, you know, someone brought up European buildings, and there is such care that is taken into maintaining European buildings. They're also built generally better than we were building post-war, right? In the 40s and 50s, just a rush for construction in America, and a lot of those buildings were not made to last. So I am sad to see the main be demolished. You know, there's nostalgia that we all share. I do agree with Commissioner Dubac, though, I don't see how we could stop that. I don't, you know, we've heard that they could pull a permit for demo tomorrow. I don't know how we could stop private property owner from doing something that's completely legal on their site. I would encourage the main art group to continue, as has been said, to continue working with Mr. Jonah and Mr. Cowan. I know that they can work out a deal for any of the other places Commissioner Perush mentioned. I personally think that Imagine would be a home run to, you know, I know that Imagine has offered regular screenings of art shows in their theaters, and I think that is a easy solution to keep, you know, the main goal, I don't think everyone cares about the building as much as the culture that comes with it. So there's a solution to find to bridge that cultural gap and keep these theater, you know, these movies showing in the city. And if that's a true goal, the cultural gap is the goal, I think we could find a solution there. And I know that the developer has committed to that. When looking at the building, I was a little on the fence about the building, to be honest. I've had lots of discussions about it. The changes made here at the table tonight, I think, are phenomenal, and fit me over the top to thinking that this building would be good for Royal Oak, so that's why I'll be supporting it tonight.
Mr. Macy?
Yeah, I think a lot of what, a lot of it's been said already at the table tonight. I mean, I think everyone can tell that we all feel the same way about the main. I think when we first found out about it closing down and there was something went out, like, sign up to save the main, I signed up to save the main. Like, I was part of that group as well because I wanted to do that. And then I found out that the, got farther along and that the proposed solution was to stop the developer from doing something on their, on their own private property, which is just a real challenge for us, as I think Commissioner Dubac summed it up really nicely about what our responsibility as a government is. And that goes outside the bounds. Now, what I think is within side the bounds of our responsibility as a government is to make sure that they're providing community benefits, which is part of the ordinance that we have here, and even though we don't have, as was stated, full-out community ordinance, community benefits ordinance, which we'd love to have, Mr. Bray. We still have, we still have our own standards here at the table. And so I think what we, what we're, what you've heard here tonight is sort of us trying to play that out as we can at the table, and it's a challenge, and I feel a little sorry for the developer about this, as we kind of throw new things, hey, we want this, we want these, there's different community benefit things, but to your credit, you kind of stepped up to that. I didn't feel, looking at this proposal, like there was enough in here to, for there to be community benefits that would make this a worthwhile project, but as was just stated, I think the things that have, we've changed right here at the last minute actually are a major improvement to what we are, what we saw here. I still would really love to see more art component in there. I would really like there to be these serious conversations. I really appreciate that that's happened. I, as Mr. Cowan said, the fact that there has been on both sides respectful conversation about this, and not really animosity, but understanding of each other's positions and trying to work together towards a win-win, I really appreciate that of the both groups. And I hope that continues through this next meeting and beyond, if that's possible. I think it's been stated here tonight what a challenge it seems to us, you know, not just hearing the developer say, but we've done our own research about whether or not this is a feasible thing to do, to have a nonprofit come in and run this, and it seems really challenging. So I hope the proposal you're bringing, Friends of the Main, is going to be a feasible and good one, that they'll, that when they are discussing with you in good faith, can be something that they can move forward on. And we feel like we all want the same things for this space, and I'm glad that we've made some changes here tonight, and so I'll be supporting this motion as well. I hope to see some continued improvements as we go forward.
Mr. Hunt?
Yeah, I don't think I'm going to say anything that's different from what was already said up here this evening. I, you know, I was introduced to the main in high school through an English assignment where we had to go for a field trip and then write about the movie that we saw, and ever since then, I've been hooked. I'm a huge fan of the main art theater, and I'm very sad to see that it's going to transition from an art theater. But my hope is, is that Mr. Jonah and his team continues to work with the main art and find a space so that those cinemas can continue to be shown. But I appreciate the changes that were made here this evening, the, some of the sustainability plans that had been put into place and the veterans' housing. You know, I was on the fence, even walking into this meeting tonight, but I am, like I said, I appreciate hearing what I heard tonight, and I will be supporting this motion.
Yeah, I'll just add, not much more than what my colleagues have just said. Just want to let the folks know that came out to speak tonight, man, I feel you, I hear you, I share a lot of the same feelings, and I know that's hard to hear, and as you're starting to see the votes, you know, potentially come in on the table, it's hard to understand the challenging position we're in to discriminate against, you know, what maybe we want, what we feel, versus what our responsibility is, both in terms of our elected office, as well as what the law permits, that we're not voting to demolish the main art theater, that's not on the agenda today. We have no say or ability to do that, we have no ability to historically preserve it, we have no ability to buy it, and I think Commissioner Perush kind of outlined, you know, some of the elements that would really help make for a successful preservation of the theater that just aren't present today. Sometimes the physics of the, of the situation don't allow for, you know, the outcome that folks may, may want and desire. So it's, you know, change is hard for me. Every year I get older, change gets harder and harder. This will be a tough change, but if the change has to come, you know, I do feel that this project, especially, you know, with the elements that we put into the, into the motion, as far as veteran transition housing, LEED certification, the art component being put in by the, by the petitioner, and then the good faith effort to work. And I believe, I believe when the petitioner comes up here and says, a good faith effort to work with, Save the Main folks to, you know, come up with a creative idea, or at least exhaust all the creative ideas, I believe that. I believe that to be something that, you know, everyone will rally behind. You know, there's just some real, real limitations. Like I said, the physics of the situation are challenging for this board, challenging for the operator, I think even challenging for the nonprofit as well. I mean, it's, it's a tough, tough, tough situation. But, you know, if we have to make a change, which is what is in front of us technically is the, you know, the PUD, it's not the demolition, we have to give it a fair shake. And I think with what's been added in here, the office goal that Mr. Cowan mentioned is another thing that we've been pushing over the years, especially coming out of COVID. How do you get people from the living room to the conference room, back into our downtowns? And with these other benefits, I think, you know, that softens the blow of the change, and certainly will make it a successful project. So it's, you know, I'm not asking for anything on anybody, other than I hope you appreciate the tough decisions this panel has to make in the context of which we have to make them.
All right. So with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
I just want to say thank you. We're looking forward to making this a great project and working together with the city and so forth. Make this good, so.
We appreciate it. Best of luck to you, Mr. Jonah, and, you know, appreciate you, you know, and your good faith effort to work with the folks of Save the Main.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan.
Done.
Okay, this brings us to our last agenda item tonight, which is the approval for professional services agreement, Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update. I see Mr. Fenton, no, Mr. Filipski. Mr. Filipski, you are...
It's all me?
We'll hand it over to you right now. It's getting late, it's almost tomorrow, so, you know, everyone watch the words that come out of my mouth if I make a mistake procedurally here.
I'll be brief. Good evening, Mayor Fournier and members of the City Commission. The item before you today is requesting approval for a professional services agreement with McKenna for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update. The current master plan, which was drafted in 2018, expires this year, and so staff at DPS and Recreation Department submitted a request for qualifications, and we received four bids back, or proposals back, from firms to assist us in that process of developing the master plan for Parks and Recreation and conducting the community input sessions that are related to that. Four firms responded. We had the opportunity to interview all, all four of the forms and the firms in great detail, but of all of those, we feel that based on what the community expects, McKenna provided the proposal that gave us the greatest level of detail, and also the greatest number of community input meetings, as I indicated here in the report, which, as you all know, is really important, especially when it comes to parks and recreation items. Others did offer that they could ramp that up if we felt that were necessary, at which point we would have been coming close to the cost of McKenna in any case. And also, we, the staff was impressed with the process by which McKenna, compared to the others, were going to go about this with in-depth park visits at each of those, but also with an eye towards things that are important for the residents in the City Commission, including accessibility and sustainability. So, you know, when this is done, if approved by the commission tonight, we would end up leaving with, well, when the process is completed, with better, more refined goals and objectives for our parks and programming, recommendations on accessibility and sustainability, a report on the general conditions and deficiencies that we're facing currently, and most importantly, a five-year action plan that can inform our capital improvement planning process. Additionally, they go a little bit beyond that, if there's, if there's kind of longer-range items that they... that they, they would make recommendations on. And then lastly, we would all get copies of this. So it's a, it's a big process. It's a big undertaking, and it's important for the community. After careful review, I'm happy to make that recommendation for McKenna. I'd also be happy to answer any questions you may have. And Mr. Paul Urbil is here from McKenna, who can answer any sort of detailed question that I might not have the, the answer to.
Questions? Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, it's a great plan. There's, there's a lot in here. I love the community engagement. I love that we get a plan this year, too, because I think we're all excited to implement it. Can you talk a little bit about, I mean, this was one of the higher bids, the high bid. Can you talk about how there's actually cost savings built into that? Or why, why makes the most sense to go with this as opposed to potentially a lower bid?
Yeah, well, first of all, I want to say, I think it speaks a bit of McKenna that they, they, this was their original proposal. And they then offered, I think that indicates an understanding of the importance of community engagement, real in-depth community engagement. And so that, that right out of the gate. The fact that, you know, they were very detailed in the proposal. I, I don't want to say that these other groups weren't qualified, but in presenting it to us, they were very detailed in it, more so than the others. So there's, there's value in that. Also, you know, we take an eye to, they, they were detailed about what specific tasks their team would do. That wasn't always detailed in some of the others. And as you know, we're, we're trying to juggle a lot of different things. And so to the extent that we can save staff time, both for my staff, also for Judy Davidson and the folks that she works with, I was comfortable that we weren't going to also be paying for this and then, in addition to that, putting far too many resources of our own into it. So there, I think the value is that they're capable of, of doing a lot of the behind the scenes.
Okay, so we're expending less of our own resources also to get this process moving along, gain a high-quality product.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Macy, I want to hear from you regardless, so I'm going to call on you.
Okay, well, I was just going to say, I'm pretty sure that this high bid is all my fault because I've been on DPS's case about this master plan and how I want it to be like really, really good and kind of blow us away. And I think they've been paying attention to the questions we've had up here about some of the contracts and proposals we've had and what exactly what we're going to be receiving, the receivables at the end of those, and, you know, what, what work we can expect from them versus what work we can expect from our own staff. And so that's something we have said that we want to see in these proposals. And this proposal is, it's really good. It's really impressive. I like, I mean, I like that they're going to have this, this really robust community engagement. I think that was something we've obviously been asking for repeatedly. And we know it's, we know that takes time, and we know that takes effort, and that's something that our community is going to want as we go into this parks planning process. And the parks are really important to our residents. We know they are. And if we're thinking about putting them on the ballot with them, we need to know what they want and what they're looking for. So I think it's, I think this is really worth it. I do want to know if they're going to work with my teenagers. Did you get a commitment to work with my teens? Okay.
Yeah, they, they offered to work with different stakeholder organizations that are kind of outside of traditional stuff, with staff, things like the Nature Society and other volunteer organizations.
I mean, my teens who want to help with the engagement.
Oh, well, no, we didn't talk about that specifically, but we can.
All right, so, I mean, I'll need approval.
Here are the motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion.
Well, they work with my toddler. You know, they did include my toddler on the front page, so that, you know, that's going to win my heart right there. The executive summary.
And the water, and the water's part.
I'll just say, if Commissioner Macy supports it, then it's got to be good. And she never ceases to amaze me at her ability to contract out child labor, volunteer experiences, you know. I'll tell you, she has a very good sales pitch, too. Most kids between the ages of ten and eighteen, so it's amazing.
Like those kids.
Hey, you're going to inherit this city one day. You're going to live here. You might as well shape it. Get to work. All right. Okay, if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Filipski. Good work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the end of the meeting. It's still today. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Adjourned.